I'd like to call the December 8th, 2021 Board Meeting to order. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Here. Mrs. Moore, since you are our host school tonight, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, that opens us up to the communication from our host school, which tonight is Bauer. Mrs. Moore?
Good evening. It's so great to see you all.
One second. Is the mic on?
Is it?
Yeah.
I want to start by saying thank you. I am, and my husband are both kindergarten through 12th grade, District 200 products ourselves, and have raised three children who have now completed K through 12 in District 200. I'm so incredibly thankful for the work that each of you do and the work that your predecessors have done to make District 200 such a great place to work and to have raised children. So, thank you so much for what you do. Today, I'm excited to be standing here as the principal of Bauer, and this is my third year as the principal there, and each year has been marked a little bit by the pandemic. And what that's presented is really a great opportunity for us to grow closer as a community, and I'm excited to tell you a little bit today about what we've done at Bauer to do that. Our staff, which is mighty, you can see here, our theme this year was "Our School, Our Family, and Together Is Our Favorite Place To Be." And for this mighty staff, we were just so happy to be together, and we were so happy to welcome back our Virtual Academy students. One of the things we really wanted to focus on this year were what are things we can do to continue to build connections at Bauer and to celebrate our staff and our students. At Bauer, these are our guidelines for success that we follow, and we incorporate these guidelines in classroom lessons, we incorporate these in our SEL lessons, and this year we were looking for ways to do that in an even greater way. So what we've done this year is every single Friday from 2:15 to 2:45, we have our Bauer Family Time. So each Friday, we do something unique. We rotate through four Fridays and what we do each time. The first Friday is our All-School Meetings, and this was something I started my first year, and it allowed us, that first year, we were in the gym, all of the students and the staff, and this was a chance for us to celebrate Bauer, celebrate what it meant to be a Bobcat. Last year, we found a way to kind of cleverly do it virtually, and we projected them on smart boards and were able to see everyone's little square, and this year, we were able to start the year by doing it outside. At our All-School Meetings is a chance where we do some type of SEL lesson, and then we, in addition to that, celebrate our birthdays. So every single one of our Bauer students gets an opportunity to come up. There's a question of the month for our birthdays, for example, what's your favorite candy? And the students all have an opportunity to answer on the mic. So every student at Bauer has an opportunity to speak with a microphone, speak to an audience. At Bauer, because we are such a special place, we house seven of our self-contained special education classrooms. Each of those students has a plan when they come up to, they have their talker, or they have a button where they've prepared, they also have an opportunity to answer those questions in front of their classmates. What this does is it gives our students an opportunity to practice speaking skills and to know something about each other. Students are making connections during that time. This picture here shows some of our October birthday friends coming up to answer the question. These were some of our staff members during our lesson time. They were giving examples on how to use playground equipment appropriately. When you have a pandemic and you don't have recess for the first year, there's a lot of rules you have to relearn at recess time, so that was kind of our start of our year. Our third Friday, we do Bauer Buddies, and so every single one of our classrooms is partnered with another classroom of a different age, and those teachers come up with a plan together on what they're going to do each month. So in this example here, we have 5th grade and 2nd grade students sharing a book together. Sometimes our buddies will meet outside and play a game. These girls were working on a buddy packet that they were doing together. These students here are 4th grade and a 1st grade, and they were interviewing our 1st grade students questions, and this kind of gave them an opportunity to make connections, what the things they had in common. And sometimes it's just reading. We have lots of cozy spots at Bauer where students get an opportunity to do that. Our third Friday, we do an All-School Read, so all of our students, including staff, from 2:15 to 2:45, drop everything and read. Sometimes, in this example here, Mrs. Sullivan, one of our 4th grade teachers, is spending the time reading aloud to her class. Sometimes we have, in this example, it's a little dark to see, our new PE teacher, Diego Caldera, but he has projected on a board a book that he loved, and he's sharing it with 5th grade students. And then sometimes we just find cozy places in the classroom, and we're reading in our cozy spots. And then our 4th Friday is something that was new this year, that I'm really, really proud and excited about. We call them our PAWS families, stands for Positively Awesome Wonderful Students, and of our 440 students, every single student is placed into a family. Each family is led by a staff member. We have 59 staff members who are there on Friday at the 2:15 to 2:45 window to run a family, so that includes our aides, our OTs, our PTs, our speech teachers, our classroom teachers, our PE teachers, our reading specialists. Every single one of our staff members runs a family, and in your family, they're representing students from every single grade level and class. So we have, ideally in each family, there's a kindergarten, a 1st grader, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grader. One of the things that's kind of special about this time is our 4th and 5th graders act as our chaperones, and they leave a couple minutes before 2:15, and they walk and pick up our K-1, 2 students, and they escort them to their families. Kind of gives them an opportunity to act as leaders and continues to build that connection within the family. Each one of our families has a lesson. Well, we do the same lesson when we're meeting. So this next couple slides are from our November meeting where we focused on gratitude. We start our family meetings, kind of like a morning meeting with a greeting, and then we showcase a grade level. So last month, our 2nd grade students were showcased, staff members, our students asked them questions, we learned a little bit more about them. We did a gratitude tree where each one of our students had planned what things they were thankful for and added that to the tree, and we played a game with dice where when they rolled the dice, the number they rolled represented a category where students shared something that they were thankful for. One of the special things about our PAWS families is that those families will stay together throughout their time at Bauer. So when our 5th graders this year move on to Hubble, our kindergarteners next year will replace them within a family, so the students will continue to grow with the other students in their family and with their staff members. And what I've loved myself is getting to hear, whether it was teachers or students, say, "Oh, I know Liam, he's in my family," or teachers or aides who would only have an opportunity to know the students that they work with, or the students who have moved on from their grade now have an opportunity to get to know students throughout the building. And these students and staff members have really been able to build connections with students that they don't normally always get to come across. You can tell them sometimes on our night stays, our families have met outside. When you have 59 families, you got to find a lot of places to spread out and meet. And whether it has been at our All-School Meetings, or our Bauer Buddies, or our All-School Read, or our PAWS families, all of these at Bauer have given us an opportunity to showcase that we are one school and we are one family, and that together is our favorite place to be. I look forward to the time when you guys will be able to come to Bauer for a board meeting and see how wonderful we are over at Bauer. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore, for sharing the creative approach that you guys have taken to connections. Thank you. Okay. Next, is there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, we move on to recognitions and achievements, the recognition of the Wheaton North Class A 7A State Champion Football Team.
Absolutely. I'm going to welcome up to the podium first Mr. Biskin, who's the principal at Wheaton North, and I think just important to say, we have tremendous opportunities throughout the year to recognize very talented students across our district. We recognize students for academic accomplishments, for athletic accomplishments, for accomplishments in the art, for accomplishments around building community, and I think one of the things that is just important to recognize, especially as we talk about Friday nights at a high school, is it's all of those things, right? The opportunity through football to bring together the community really showcases art through the talents of our band spirit, through the spirit communities that cheer for our athletes, it brings together community to serve and support the concessions and all of the events that sit around it, and of course, it brings an opportunity to celebrate our students on the field, and it goes without saying that the accomplishment this year was absolutely incredible. I haven't personally had the opportunity to be right there at the end of a state championship football game, but I was, and I can say without a doubt, I don't know whether I had more fun watching the reaction of our students or our coaches right after the game, but together, there really was a pure joy and an excitement. So, Mr. Biskin, I'm going to let you introduce our honored guest tonight and the trophy, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler, and poor event. It truly is an honor to be here, and just to build on your point, as the principal of Wheaton North, I have the unique opportunity to see all kinds of students learn, perform, and compete. And for the last 14 weeks during our fall season, I had a front row seat to be able to watch our football team learn and grow every single week. They were an absolute model of toughness, hard work, resilience, and more importantly, togetherness. You had a group of students from all different backgrounds, they came together, worked toward one goal, and they really demonstrated how, when you work toward one goal, you become something bigger than yourself. And I then had the unique opportunity, like you, Dr. Schuler, to be down on the field when they won, and I guess the best way I could say it is it was just pure joy. Pure joy. Laughter, tears, hugs, kids, staff, just the outpouring of emotion after all of the work that they had put in. And it takes a real leader to be able to create an atmosphere and a setting for people to learn and grow and to thrive, and we are truly honored to be able to have our head coach, Joe Wardinsky, here tonight. If you give him a big round of applause. And then we also have our two team captains, Ross Dansdill and Mark Forkucci. Give them a round of applause. So, without further ado, I'm going to now hand it over to our head coach, Joe Wardinsky.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler, members of the board, for the invitation to be here this evening. We obviously enjoyed a spectacular season this year with this group of kids. You know, the way that the community got behind us, especially once we reached the postseason, it was amazing. I'm sure these guys can vouch for that. You know, Principal Biskin and our Athletic Director, Mr. Fisher, our Activities Director, Ms. Nillis, you know, they did a great job of creating an atmosphere in the building, you know, helped us on the field as well as in all of our preparation for the games to walk out to a full set of stands and see a lot of people supporting us. It really meant a lot. If you were at the semifinal game against Brother Rice in particular, you know, there were people there tailgating at noon for a 4 o'clock game, and stands were packed, people were standing five, six deep around the fence up on the hill by the baseball field. So the atmosphere for these kids to perform in was amazing, and that's because of the direction of our Athletic Director and our Principal and our Activities Director. The boys, our two captains are here tonight, they provided great leadership for us all year long. Mark's a senior. Mark's going to go on and play football next year at Holy Cross. He's got a scholarship opportunity to do that, and he's going to set himself up for a bright future. He's going to get a great education, and a lot of that is a result of his ability to play the game of football. It's opening up other avenues for him. Ross is a junior. Ross will have opportunities as well after next season to go on and play, and probably scholarship opportunities for him as well. So it's exciting to see our kids putting in the time and the hard work, and then they're going to benefit from it, from getting an education, going out and getting a good job one day. Mr. Biskin and Superintendent Schuler, you talked about, you know, bringing everybody together on a Friday night, and I mentioned this the other day at our Assembly that we had out on Rexilius Field. You know, I believe that football does create a platform for not only the players, but for the dance team, the cheerleaders, the band, to come there and showcase their skills. You know, football's a big part of that, obviously, and enables everyone to get together, and having people perform in front of a packed house is really important. I have a daughter that's on a dance team now in college. I have a son that's in the marching band at college, and they love their experience on Friday nights at the football games when they were in high school, and now they're able to continue doing what they love at the college level. And then I have a son that's also in high school, and he's playing football. So, you know, football does a lot. It's done a lot for me in my life, provided me an education. I got a scholarship to play at Southern Illinois and got into teaching and coaching because I love the game and I love working with young people. So football, it creates a lot of opportunities for kids on the field as well as the other things that I just mentioned as well. To be able to bring a fourth state championship, to be a part of that, it means a lot to me. You know, 1979, under Coach Rex, 1981, under Coach Turnbull, and then 1986, once again under Coach Rexilius. Those were amazing years. I've heard from so many alumni, talked about those great teams and compared those to the team that we had this year. It was a lot of fun sharing stories with people I had never met before, but suddenly, when you're winning games, people come out of the woodwork and they want to enjoy it and share in it with you, which was outstanding. I was telling a story, it's interesting, I felt like I, my family had a part of the 1981 State Championship game. My brother was a quarterback at Bennett Academy, and they played Wheaton North in the 1981 semifinal, and it was 0 to 0 in the fourth quarter. My brother dropped back to pass, and Jim Jurega, who was an outstanding offensive-defensive lineman for the Falcons, sacked my brother, caused a fumble at the 5-yard line. Wheaton North punched it in, went on to the state finals and won the game. So, I feel like my family had a role in two of those, two of those state championships. I mentioned that to my brother, he didn't appreciate that very much, but... So, you know, the atmosphere of the games this year, the hard work that these guys put in, I need to also mention my staff. I have 20 coaches that work with me, half of which are volunteer guys, and they're putting in long hours every week. Saturdays, Sundays, we're at school, it's a seven-day-a-week job during the fall, and those guys are there with me all year long, putting in game plans and getting these kids ready to perform. So I want to thank them for all their hard work, and then most of all, these kids and the dedication that they've shown to the program over four years. You know, we have the talent in our buildings here in Wheaton and Warrenville to win state championships. It's a matter of getting kids out to play. You know, we've got kids walking our halls that are good athletes, and we try to get them out for football. Sometimes we can convince them, sometimes we can't. Sometimes it's hard to convince the parents to give football a shot, but the biggest thing is retaining the ones that we have. We had a big senior class this year, they stuck together for four years, and it just shows that when you can retain your players and keep them in the program, you can do good things, and I really credit the senior class for their leadership and sticking together. I think they had a lot of fun along the way, and it all paid off. So, we're hopeful that the future will be just as bright, but winning a state championship's not easy. Obviously, it was a 35-year drought in our building, and it was an outstanding experience this year. I wouldn't trade it for the world, and these kids did an outstanding job, so credit to them. Thank you very much for letting me be here this evening.
I mean, the only thing I really have to say is that it was just such a memorable experience, the entire season, all 14 weeks of it, including summer camp. Like Principal Biskin said, just the work that we put in as a collective group, day in and day out, you know, it's just, it's great to see it all come full circle and see all the hard work you put in pay off, especially when it's with guys like him who are just your good buddies outside of football. Being able to share that success with them, it's a really special moment, so it's something that I'll just truly remember for the rest of my life, and I'm glad that I got to share it with a guy like him, so...
I just want to thank the community. Like Coach Wardinsky said, it's great to have great teammates, but also to have a great community supporting us, and it's really just nice to see, like, all the businesses in Wheaton, bringing us nice things like pizzas. I mean, we're getting free things every day this week, so, you know, it's really nice to have a nice community who's supporting us. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I was in Chicago the day after you won the semifinals, and you know that a community is embracing the school. When I'm wearing a Falcon mask and a family comes up to me and they said, "Go Falcons, we're Wheaton-Warnville South Tigers," but now we're Falcons this week. So, you know, that just is, it's a wonderful thing that our community came together. Thank you guys very much. Okay. Onto President's Report. I only have a couple of things tonight. We held the middle of November since our last meeting, a local legislative breakfast. It was very highly attended by many different forms of government throughout our different communities that we serve. It was great to have that opportunity to get together and chat and learn a little bit more about our school district. We attended the triple I conference the weekend before Thanksgiving, and during our board reports, I'm going to ask that each board member pick one thing that they experienced at that conference and just take a minute or so to share publicly tonight about that. Tomorrow, I will be attending a small group meeting with the Illinois Association of School Boards. One of the topics on the agenda is advocacy for large unit districts and better representation within the organization. Tonight, if you looked at the agenda ahead of time, you saw that our public comment window has been merged to include agenda and non-agenda topics together. This allows the public to speak on any topic prior to the business portion of the meeting. Dr. Schuler, your report?
Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree. Just a couple of things that I wanted to mention to the board under my report, similar to the reference to the local elected officials breakfast. We just had an opportunity to speak to a couple of our local area community support clubs, just had an opportunity to deliver a similar message that we did at the elected official tour, two Rotary groups, our Lions Club locally, and that has annually been a part of kind of how we've moved that state of the schools opportunity and message. So appreciative to those groups for allowing us to do that. Wanted to mention both to the board and to the community that a little bit earlier this week, actually maybe it was the very tail end of last week, the Illinois Interactive School Report Cards went live on their website. Not all of the data that is normally available through the interactive report cards is up there this year, some of the data that was not collected last year is not reflected, but certainly there's information about SAT, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, that's the K, not the K-38 achievement test. There's certainly information about participation rates in those assessments. They break the data out by each of our subgroups to focus specifically on any achievement gaps within the district. They include performance scatter plots that allow us to see our performance relative to the rest of the state. There's information on 9th grade on track and our early college coursework, both items that we've shared with the board before. So, again, that is available through the Illinois Report Card at www.littleraportcard.com. And again, that information just went live at the end of last week. That's about a month, a little over a month later than it normally would be available to the community, but it was released by the state. Wanted to mention on our consent agenda tonight, there are a number of items that, while we're not specifically discussing each of the items, I think you're just important to make mention of. Number one, the board will be asked to approve several new courses that would go in the high school course catalog for next year. Three of those are early college opportunities. One of them is a dual-credit opportunity, an Intro to Education 1 and 2. There are also two Advanced Placement courses that are being added, an Advanced Placement Spanish Literature and an Advanced Placement Art History course, as well as an additional course in the arts called Intro to Acting. So, excited to continue to see those opportunities expand as kids explore their pathways, and just wanted to specifically make mention of that. Also wanted to mention the board will be approving tonight your capital improvement projects for next summer, staying consistent to your policy and your pledge to address our highest need capital projects. So you'll be approving about $7 million, a little over $7 million in capital projects for next summer, and continue to thank the board and appreciate your continued commitment to ensure that we're addressing the highest needs in our facilities. Last thing that I wanted to mention tonight, because I would suspect it's likely a topic of some conversation, I just wanted to reiterate to the board, we've had several concerns recently addressed or brought to the board around items that are in a couple of our library collections, so I want to remind to the board... So, I want to remind to the board, I know that you're aware of this, there is both a process for selection of materials into the library and there is a process that allows for a community member to register a concern or a challenge to a program in that. A couple of those materials have been challenged and we're going to be true to that process. We're going to take the time to make sure that we're thorough, certainly in that review. But ultimately, at the end of that review, because the Board of Education approves core curriculum materials, any challenge to the material will ultimately come to the board for your consideration at the end. So, I mentioned that to you just to encourage you, both during public comment and perhaps outside, I would be mindful of any conversation around that procedure and topic, just understanding that ultimately a review is going to come to you. But that process does allow us to assemble a very thorough committee to look at any material that's being challenged, examine the reason it was introduced into our library collection and any connection to certainly both our curriculum and support for students. And so, again, we will certainly be true to that process as we work through. That's all I've got.
Okay, on to public comment. In accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment sign-up sheet was made available until 7:00 PM at the meeting site. Board meetings are available for viewing via live stream on the district's YouTube channel. As with all comments, please be aware that it is the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comment until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comment does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board Policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comment may be shortened to two minutes, we will be doing that due to the number of comments that we have, to provide the maximum number of people an opportunity to speak. There are several people that have signed up for the same comment. If the person that is, has already shared your thoughts, you can feel free to come up to the microphone and say, "I have, you know, followed along with the same comments that this person has shared." To preserve the confidentiality, the board and its president shall request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district. Limit your comments to two minutes. Mr. Hanlon will time the comments and raise his hand at the two-minute part and that will conclude your comments. We do have a hard stop. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. I'm going to read both names, the first name and then the person who is up thereafter to expedite. We do have more people speaking than what we have allotted, but we would like to be able to have everyone have the opportunity to speak. I'm going to ask for there not to be cheering or comments being made in between so that we can expedite and give everybody that opportunity to be able to talk tonight that would like to. First up is Mona Spade and after that is Nathan Mead.
Hello, my name is Mona Spade. I've lived in the district for 25 years. We have a sophomore at Wheaton North and a senior in college who both worked their way through the Northside schools. I wanted to say thank you for continuing the COVID-19 mitigations that have helped us to have a low spread at the schools. As a Northsider, I've been extremely thankful, not just for the awesome football team that we've had, but our marching band also had a pretty awesome season this year. They placed at every single invitational that they performed at this year. As a parent volunteer embedded in the band during the competitive season, I can tell you that I've never seen a bunch of kids so happy as to be back at the hard work this year. They worked so hard all summer long and it was amazing to see them show off that work. Thank you for keeping the safety of our kids and the community number one. Secondly, I would like to note that I would expect the board and administration to adopt and adhere to the suggestions put forward by the Surgeon General regarding the youth mental health. Having lost my best friend, my brother, at 25 years old to death by suicide and spending way much, too much time trying to get our now 22-year-old daughter help when she needed it at 15, I must insist that we as a community do more for our kids' mental health. We are very thankful that our daughter is still with us today, but it was a lot of time and traveling trying to get the help that she needed. At this point, she's a prosperous senior in college, working and applying to grad school. She still has to fight hard every day, but it's easier now that she can get that help. We are very lucky. It's not a new problem in our community and I expect that this board and administration will do what is right to help keep the kids' mental health at the same priority as their physical health. Thank you.
Next up is Nathan Mead and after that, Matt Doctor.
Well, good evening. My name is Nathan and I have four children, along with my wife. I want to first thank you all. Thank you for your hard work with our students. Thank you for your hard work. Last year, we were one of the only districts that were open. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I am here tonight because it has come to my attention that last week a seven-year-old student from Weasbrook Elementary brought home the book, Jack, Not Jackie. It is a book that is geared towards early readers and celebrates early onset gender dysphoria. This book was found in the library and was brought home, and the student brought it home. Additionally, board, there is a graphic novel style book called Gender Queer. And that is available at Wheaton North, Wheaton South. This book details the sexual journey of an adolescent girl with gender dysphoria, which shows graphic images of blood-soaked sanitary napkins, oral sex, sex toys, multiple techniques for masturbation and breast binding. As a father, I have to speak up in alarm and dismay, but I am in no way displaying any hate towards the LGBTQ community, zero. I have learned so much about the LGBTQ community through Preston Sprinkle and the Center of Faith, Sexuality, and Gender and the podcast Theology in the Raw. Please give it a listen. I do though have to speak up and say, are we grooming our children in ways that bring them over-sexualized and hyper-sexualized? We cannot do that. As a parent, I know that I can opt out my children from books like this, but why can't we have it so that we have to opt in? Why, you know, we all remember Family Video, where that, you went to Family Video, there was the room in the back for the adult material. Not everyone had to see that. Why do we have to have that in our schools for our kids to see this? There is a difference, board, between adults and between children. Board, we have age limits for people that they have to be a certain age to buy alcohol, to get a tattoo, to buy cigarettes, to buy alcohol, to join the military, to drive. Thank you very much. Let's have those age limits for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt Doctor, and then Kathleen Murphy.
Hi, my name is Matt. I live in Wheaton. I have kids at Emerson in fourth and first grade. First of all, thank you for doing so much to fight for our kids. I'm here today just because I'm concerned, I see, I've seen people from the board here and also a lot of public comments, people pushing back with extremely polarized views, kind of believing that their view is the best solution and failing to listen. I think that is really detrimental and I think it just causes more division in our community. People tend to stay in their lane and they view everything from that vantage point. They force the data to support their particular view. And I think this is what's most damaging. We see this happening everywhere, unfortunately. It saddens me and I hope we can do better as a community to come together, to kind of respect each other and really have that conversation. I see that happening, but I would like to see that happen more. I want to highlight just a couple of things, a couple of areas I think that we could do better as a community and use specifically as the board to truly understand the facts and not really be swayed by the noise. I hope we can all agree that ensuring the health and safety of our kids is important, but when it comes to differing views on masks and vaccine mandates, we need to look at the facts and ask ourselves if the greatest risk for our children is actually the virus or could it be the mental health strain and that the masks and social distancing and isolation have had on our kids these last year. I hope we can all agree that diversity and equity in education is important, but when it comes to the differing views on how the schools should be addressing topics like Nathan mentioned with sexual inappropriate materials in our schools, we need to ask ourselves, excuse me, if supporting, if exposing our children to complex gender and sexual topics before they can even read or before they've ever gone through puberty is actually doing more harm than good. I spoke with Dr. Chris Salagi about the SEL curriculum and he highlighted to me some things that I think really make the difference here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kathleen Murphy and then Alicia O'Connell.
You'll probably hear from a few people tonight who think that the path we're on, which is acquiescing to every mandate and idea of this governor and his State Board of Education is the right path for District 200. I am sorry, but not according to what we're hearing from our mental health community. I'd like to read to you a public service announcement that was posted by a local pediatric office called Whole Child Pediatrics. It says, "So vomiting and diarrhea are back, respiratory panels showing pneumonia, metavirus, para-influenza, and rhino retroviruses are still dominating the scene. Strep cases are still trickling in, we have not yet seen a bump in COVID and we have no, we have had no Omicron variant, to my knowledge, anywhere in the state. More than anything else, we are seeing a huge surge in anxiety and depression. In the last week, I have sent five children to Linden Oaks for evaluation for possible outpatient treatment due to suicide risks. Many are refusing to go to school, most of our mental health facilities are full and have a two to three waiting, two to three month waiting list for children. We need to help our kids. I'm so concerned about the lasting psychological effect of this pandemic." I won't, and I won't mention specific schools or students, but we are seeing this trend manifest in our high schools and in our grade schools. And this week, a child that I love was hurt by that trend. We have a seven-year-old bringing home books with sexually explicit materials that were given to them by a school librarian. It's not okay. You know it's not okay because you didn't defend the prince, you didn't defend the librarian, you didn't defend the book. You let the librarian take the blame. So, you, I am asking you to push back on ideas that you know instinctively as parents are not right. Push back on Governor Pritzker, the State Board of Education. Let parents back into the discussions about this because we are moving from community-run schools and a community-run school district to state-run schools.
Next up is Alicia O'Connell and after that is Marcus Malcolm.
I am reading a letter on behalf of a student at Wheaton North. A letter that was sent to this school board on November 10th with the student's identity. A letter which no trusted adult responded to. Quote, "About a week ago in English class, I began to see a few of my classmates take off their masks for a moment. I was shocked by how emotive other students were and found all the details of their faces both socially informative and mentally stimulating. My mind was excited to see the faces of my classmates, faces I had never seen before. At this moment, I realized what my high school had been deprived of: connection. The truth is, most of what students learn about refraction and the Pythagorean theorem is fascinating, but not practical enough to serve them in any actionable way. The one practical thing that high schools have historically granted students is connection. Practice in social situations, both enjoyable and difficult, preparing them for navigation at future universities, workplaces, and marriages. With a generation that has already socially stunted themselves with their mobile phones, I believe masks should not be mandatory. Those who wish to wear them should be encouraged to, and those who do not should be free to take them off if necessary for their mental health. I am confident in the strength of vaccines and believe that schools should grant masking freedoms as long as COVID cases remain low. I miss seeing others' faces and shudder to imagine that my fellow classmates might be as lonely as I am. I ask the district to please grant me relational intimacy and develop my social skills. Thank you." End quote. I have been committed to speak honestly and respectfully before this board. However, I am appalled that no one gave the struggling student the decency of a response. It's disappointing that the district prides itself on educating the whole child, yet has ignored an opportunity to act in congruence with its stated goal of connectedness for all students.
Next up is Marcus Malcolm and then Amy Klaus.
My name is Marcus. I've got three kids in the district. And like Nathan said, I wanted to open up by saying I'm thankful, kids have had an awesome experience in Franklin and at Hawthorne, and I'm thankful for it. And I can personally attest to the teacher's kindness and patience and flexibility during these tough times. Through this period of uncertainty that we find ourselves staying in for some time here, I do ask that we respect the diversity of thought and personal convictions represented here in this room and across our schools. Masks, vaccinations, and new content introduced are highly polarizing, as we know. And it's imperative, at least in my view, that we don't lean into our personal biases and as policies are considered and decisions are made. As a dad, it's up to me to protect my kids. That means making sure they wear coats on cold days like today, checking on their homework and their phones, and give them medicine if they're sick. If my child is predisposed to an illness, I need to ensure he or she is protected. My child is struggling socially, it's up to me to ensure that he has opportunities to interact with their kids in normal ways. It's definitely hard to find middle ground and I don't envy your situations and decisions that you have to make. But I do believe that there isn't a one, and I don't believe there's a one-size-fits-all solution for us. So, I think we need to really lean into our creativity and it's our ability to be creative that'll set us apart. Being flexible in our classrooms could very well be a big piece of that puzzle. That might mean giving autonomy to our teachers based on circumstance. If risks are low, perhaps that means easing mandates. If risks are high, that might mean asking more out of our students. We know division isn't the way, of course. No student should be ashamed for wearing a mask in any setting, just as no wearing a mask if the situation allows. Same story for vaccines or exposure to new content. Yeah, I guess I would just say, thanks for being extra sensitive during this time and recognizing, again, the diversity of thought represented in this room. Our children are watching us and they're learning from us and they're learning really what it means to compromise. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Malcolm, next up is Amy Klaus and after that is Jeannie Ives.
My name is Amy Klaus. I'm the mother of two girls who attend Wheaton North High School. I'm a taxpayer in District 200 and a 24-year high school math teacher in District 207. I'm here tonight as a parent and an educator to ask District 200 to review and revise its dress code, which contains provisions that identify gender-specific clothing and targets female and female identifying students. Title IX and the Equal Protection Clause prohibit schools from basing either a dress code or its enforcement on sex stereotypes such as generalizations about what types of clothing or appearance are appropriate for a girl or a boy. While wearing clothes that are comfortable and make them feel good about themselves, my daughters have been told by Wheaton North High School staff and administration, quote, "Cover up. Nobody wants to see that. You can't get an education in a tank top. You're a distraction." Recently, a dean dress coded my daughter after a male student, who for context, has been targeting my daughter for several years, claimed he was distracted by her outfit. My daughter, who was not interacting with the student, was eating lunch and had just finished PE. In an attempt to cool off, it was watching, and was in a tank top. While in the dean's office, my daughter was kept out of class for nearly 15 minutes, missing vital instructional time. School's dress code presumes the clothing choices of female identifying students are designed to attract the attention from males. Can we please stop hyper-sexualizing girls' bodies and ascribing provocation to female clothing? Can we agree girls should be able to dress as comfortably and confidently as their male classmates? Can we also agree once and for all that boys alone are responsible for their own behavior? And can we stop prioritizing the education of boys over that of girls? The dress code and the manner in which it is being enforced at Wheaton North High School is discriminatory and unconstitutional. Therefore, I respectfully ask the board to opt in. Therefore, I respectfully ask the board to adopt a new dress code that provides for equitable educational access and is written in a manner that avoids reinforcing stereotypes, ensures effective, equitable, and consistent enforcement in a manner that does not reinforce or increase marginalization or oppression of any group based on race, sex, gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, ethnicity, religion, cultural observance, household income, or body size and type.
Thank you. Next up is Jeannie Ives and after that is Carrie Potts.
At last month's board meeting, a board member asked the others to consider rhetorical questions about keeping Columbus Day on the calendar. That board member referred to the day as celebrating extreme violence, theft, genocide, and dehumanization, and that it would lead to the district to unintentionally support a myth of U.S. exceptionalism. Only someone naive of history would believe that Columbus's discovery of America was done with violent and genocidal intent. To the contrary, Columbus, by all accounts, was a man of faith and courage. His mission was courageous. No one else before had embarked on that journey of discovery and created a bridge between the old and new worlds. To allege genocidal intent through disease spread is to assume that scientists at that time understood germs, which they did not. To say that Columbus brought violence to the natives is to negate the savage treatment among the natives themselves. War, slavery, cannibalism, child sacrifice, and sexual immorality were all common. When America was founded, it was imperfect, but the ideals for which it stood had never been seen in a nation before, never before in history. Had a nation put into writing and sworn allegiance to a document that said, "All men are created equal." The founders created a system where your fate was not created by who your father was, but rather by your own pursuits. Citizenship then and now is not a result of class, lineage, or tribe, but rather requires a simple pledge of allegiance to the republic and her principles. And in America, all our rights are inalienable. They are irrevocable because they come from God. At our founding, no other nation before had penned such a declaration, which makes us exceptional. It is why over 1.7 million people have crossed our southern border illegally this year. Any board member who doubts our exceptionalism should resign immediately. For the record, Yoboa's opposition to Columbus Day puts one, her, on the same side of history as white supremacists and the Ku Klux Klan, who in the 1920s attacked Columbus Day in order to vilify Catholics and immigrants. Further, cowardice shown by the rest of this board was in your silence. Not a single other board member spoke up to defend Columbus or America last month. I have to wonder, why are any of you serving on the board?
Next up is Carrie Potts and after that is Michael Lefito.
My name is Carrie Potts, Mary Yoboa. I value your opinion. I value your thoughts, and I appreciate you speaking out. You matter. Your life is worth being lived. You have opinions that deserve to be heard. These are messages that we as a community send to our children. But here's the thing, we can't qualify them. Either people matter, or they don't. We have a community, have a choice to make, board, to take on the side of inclusion. For parents and board members who feel this is the wrong path, I beg you to consider what the choice costs you. What does it cost you to tell every single child in our community that their life is worth being lived as they see fit? What does it cost you to refer to someone by the pronouns that they prefer? What does it cost for your child to hear some people believe differently than you? Nothing. It costs you nothing. And if it does, if it shakes the ground you stand on so greatly, then that is an issue that you need to explore on your own. But what does it is if we don't side with inclusion? What does it cost a transgender child who was taught that a book depicting their life caused an uproar in their community? For starters, it could cost them their life. LGBTQ teens are four times more likely to commit suicide than their heterosexual peers. That's it. That's the only reason you need. This school, this district, we value life. We value mental health. We value physical health, and we are putting the resources behind it. We are creating high-quality sexual education that educates all individuals of all sexualities because their life matters, period. We are creating high-quality social education that educates all individuals and does not whitewash history like Columbus Day. I ask this board, as it moves forward, pursuing comprehensive sexual and social education, include all students. Thank you.
Next up is Michael Lefito and then after that is Patty Cross.
My name is Michael Lefito. I want to thank you for your time. I have three kids in District 200. I too went to District 200. I wish there was more interaction and discussion rather than statements, so I will follow up with some emails to the board and the superintendent. I want to talk about masks, vaccine discussions, and book selection, but since my time was shortened from three to two minutes, I'll keep it really quick. Vaccine discussions, I would like on record what the school board's policy and district's policy is for teachers. My sixth grader at Hubble has said that two of his teachers have been talking about vaccines and why the students should be getting vaccines, so I'd like to know about that. I believe it's a medical decision for the family and their doctors. Book selection, I don't want to talk a lot about book selection, but I do think our process is backwards. I think committees on topics that are supposed to be, that are going to be controversial, there should be a committee ahead of time versus librarians having carte blanche. Who knows how many books have slipped through the cracks, and it's not about LGBTQ. It could be political. It could be a whole lot of different topics. Again, the selection process is wrong, and I believe that the community should have more say when there's going to be a potential controversial topic. I do want to get back on masks. I just came back from Texas over the full week of Thanksgiving, and it was wide open. Went to a Cowboys game, 93,000 people there, maybe 1% of the people were wearing masks. And then you come back to Illinois and everybody's masked up. To death, to record, it's my understanding, there's been zero deaths for people 20 years or younger in DuPage County from the start of this pandemic. We cannot vaccinate ourselves out of COVID. It's not going away. It's here to stay. So is this the new normal? Six feet apart, you can't see people's faces? I too believe that social and emotional of my kids and the anxiety that masks have caused is insurmountable. Again, my daughter did not want to go to school on Monday because of masks. She's got acne on her nose. She's nine years old and isn't in puberty. Again, kids could get vaccinated today. They can wear five masks if they want. I ask you to consider that we advocate for the majority versus the minority. Thank you.
Next up is Patty Cross and after that is Kimberly Anderson.
Hello, thank you for your time. Before I begin, I just want to say that I, that there are going to be people that disagree with me in the audience, and that's okay, but I do have the utmost respect for every parent that is here tonight because we're all here with one common goal, and that is the love for our children. And we truly all believe that we are doing what's best for our children. So I wanted to speak tonight in reference to something that came up in the last board meeting, which was an increase in speech referrals. It doesn't take a genius to put two and two together that the influx in speech referrals is most likely due to masks. This coordinates with Brown University, who recently did a study and said that children's intellectual development has decreased by 23% in direct correlation with the pandemic. It specifically cites verbal and nonverbal deficits among children. They're not being able and learning the communication skills necessary. They're not learning visual communication skills, inflection in voice, dictation, for them to be successful. I worry about this as the children go through the system. What is that going to look like in five or 10 years as they go through their education? I also wanted to speak towards the fact that I'm disappointed that in the agenda, there's nothing referencing the mental health issues among our children. It's both sides of the aisle that are concerned about this. Suicide attempts among females are up 50% and 4% amongst males since the start of the pandemic. Someone referenced Whole Child Pediatrics. I'm not going to go into that again, but you have a pediatrician on record with five referrals to Linden Oaks in the last week. I implore the school board to have the courage that she had over the summer to make masks optional. Follow the lead of the St. Anne School District, Vandalia. Morton Schools is quoted as saying, "This is your family's decision in respect to mask wearing." Thank you very much for your time.
Next up is Kimberly Anderson and after that is Ruth Julian.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Anderson, and I have a first-grade student at Washington. I just wanted to say, just thank you for your time, and the kids and the parents of District 200 are still looking for you to protect them and their rights. They have a right to a good education, and so far, this year and last year have been so par. Our kids are not getting a decent education because masks are making it difficult to hear their teacher and the other students. The kids cannot learn the speech properly when they're constantly fiddling with their masks. How many times a day are they touching their masks, especially our preschool students? How are they doing if they're constantly touching their masks, sneezing into their mask? They can't even get a tissue because they can't, they're afraid to ask their teacher because they're afraid they're sick. So I would like to, first of all, I'd like to know how much money the district has spent on the lanyards for kids' masks. If each child in elementary school and possibly the older grades received one, then how much money did that cost? Because my student came home with one, and I didn't need one for him. I didn't need a lanyard bought for him. So was it really a wise choice for the budget when all these kids are getting lanyards bought for them? When we could have spent more money on psychologists or social workers for our kids and their mental health? As quoted before, "The suicide rates and other mental health problems should be a much more of a concern to the Board of Education than these lanyards are because they're made of metal and they dig into the kids' ears anyways, and they're not comfortable." Thankfully, this virus is not really affecting children much. The flu has been proven to be deadlier. DuPage County has been proven to not be a high transmission rate for COVID, so the parents need to have control over their decisions made about their children, not the schools and not the government. Extra cleaning is being done. The kids are, the kids are being socially distanced, so masking the students still is beyond ridiculous. Anywhere else the kids go, they can be mask-free except for schools. All of our kids go on playdates in each other's houses and they don't wear masks. All of our kids hang out after school. They don't wear masks indoors. They go to the mall, they go places, and they have a choice. The parents don't mask their kids in lots of stores, but then as soon as they go to school, they're taught to mask up, which is silly because they've all been around each other indoors already mask-free. So it's just ridiculous at this point that the kids are still being masked. Thank you.
Next up is Ruth Julian and after that is Ron Julian.
First of all, I would like to thank you all for your wonderful, hard work on behalf of our children and our whole community. This evening, I'm addressing the agenda item for the vote for the coming years of calendars. As I understand it, these calendars are under consideration, which is why a vote is needed. I am asking you tonight to vote no to the calendars we have that have Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day and hold out for calendars that have only Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's easy to reassure ourselves that our positions are correct when we assume that majority positions are best for all. When white Americans think Columbus Day, or think of Columbus, we often think of a brave risk-taker who discovered a new land. As my daughter points out in her oratory speech at Wheaton North this year, this fails to allow for other perspectives. Her speech opens with, quote, "With 50 men, we could subjugate them all and make them do whatever we want. Here, there are so many of these slaves." These are the first recorded observations Christopher Columbus made about the Lukayan people he encountered when he first landed in the Americas. There are reasons why our country decided to make Columbus into a national icon. I think it is time to reevaluate these reasons and lean in to listen to minority marginalized voices that up to now have been basically invisible and erased. Again, I ask you to vote no to the current rendition of the calendars so that December 10th, not 2022, December 9th, 2023, be simply Indigenous Peoples' Day. The land we are on tonight was taken from the Council of the Three Fires, Ojibwe, Ottawa, and Potawatomi people, as well as other peoples. Thank you for your consideration of this request.
Next up is Ron Julian and after that is Brooke Heavy.
I just wanted to come up and thank you all for the hours you put into serving our community, school, and our kids. And I know that it's not easy, all the decisions you face and are processing, but thank you. And I'm thankful I have a daughter at Wheaton North High School. Thank you.
Next up is Brooke Heavy and after that is Jessica Banacek.
My name is Brooke Heavy, and I'm a parent of a seventh grader here in District 200. My oldest graduated in 2018, and I attended District 200 from kindergarten through senior and high school. August, I went with my child to attend his locker setup day, and I was greeted with many LGBTQIA flags that were proudly displayed in many rooms to designate them as safe space. For the first time ever in my 41 years of life, was I ever felt, was I ever, did I ever feel represented or shown acceptance in any building in District 200? For the first time in my entire life, a lifetime District 200 resident, I'm 41 years old. It floors me to think how much different it would have been for me had I been a student walking those halls and seen this as a child. It took me 41 years to find open representation. It is my hope that no current student does not feel welcomed and represented like I did, and I hope that they all feel welcome and representative going forward. So many other times in my life, and even just moments ago, I have felt fear for my fellow community members and their views on who I am as a person. How many children in our schools hear these parents saying these things about them and feel the same amount of fear that I do? How horrifying. This is a literal life and death scenario for many of our LGBTQIA+ youth. Representation matters, and I urge the district to support teachers that celebrate and support diversity in our schools as well as our librarians. It is extraordinarily important for our students and for their safety and well-being. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Jessica Banacek and after that is Bree Straka.
My name is Jessica Banazik, and I have two children in the district. During my public comment in the last meeting, last, in November, I asserted that most parents agreed with me, after an hour of listening to disinformation, inaccuracies, that diversity, inclusion, and public health are important parts of our school communities. I was rudely interrupted by audience members asking, "Where are they?" Well, they were home with their kids, or they were working. See, reasonable parents don't feel the need to come and demonstrate at every school board meeting about a subject, let's take masks, for example, that have been mandated. Enough is enough. The endless tirades full of inaccuracies, and tonight is no different, leveled at this board and administration, are orchestrated and they are fear-mongering at its worst. In the beginning of public comment, we are directed to speak with accurate statements. I challenge the board to address the misuse of public comment by parents who want to perpetuate an echo chamber for their pseudo-oppressions and disinformation. So, I did ask a group of parents to come with me today, you know, parents who may be of the same viewpoints. We agree that diversity and inclusion in education is important, that all students, including LGBTQIA+ students, deserve an inclusive learning environment, that book bans are wrong, that we should support teachers who attempt to celebrate diversity in the classroom, that age-appropriate sex ed needs to remain part of our curriculum, that COVID-19 mitigations need to remain intact and in effect until public health gives the direction that they can be scaled back, and to address mental health issues. And I want to say, I've heard a lot about masks being, you know, this cause of anxiety and strain. What about shooting drills? What about shootings in schools? What about, you know, the endless strain on our kids to perform at levels that maybe they aren't ready for, and their schedules are overloaded with sports, drama, all these things? What about those strains? You know, mental health was, with kids, was on the rise, mental health issues was on the, were on the rise before the pandemic. So I want to have everybody stand who came with me today. We're here and we want to work with you, not against you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bree Straka. And then after that is Justin Han.
My name is Brian Stecca, Bree for short. I agree with what Jessica just said and what Carrie Potts said earlier. I have a different thing I want to say, though. Some of it's along the same lines, so that's why I'm still speaking. Some of it's along the same lines, so that's why I'm still speaking. I'll keep it short. I'd like to take the time to thank our board members and Dr. Schuler for the mitigation efforts put in place to protect our children, teachers, staff, and our schools during this pandemic. I signed my children up for shield testing and back at the end of September, my daughter's shield test came back positive. Had we not enrolled her in this test, we would have no clue she had COVID. Due to the district providing this added mitigation effort, we were able to quarantine until she was able to return safely to school, safely for everybody. I would also like to commend the district on the virtual schedule provided while my children were out for 10 days, as you supplied us, parents, with a seamless transition while we hunkered down. This kept my kids engaged in their studies and on top of their assignments. I also had communication with their in-person teachers as well, who also had plans in place should this happen. And they have been doing a tremendous job. You guys have been doing an awesome job, so I thank you. Science is real, statistics don't lie, and masking works. Thank you for being on the right side of science, public health, and history.
Next up is Justin Khan and then after that, Brian Campen.
Hello, I'm Justin Khan. I have a student in Weasbrooke in District 200. I'm here because, first of all, we, I just don't know what to say about everything I've been hearing tonight already from the right, but we have issues with people declaring that they're going to go ahead and restrict information, ban, potentially ban books, and...
Mr. Khan, can you please put your mask back on?
And otherwise dictate what they feel needs to be done for my child. Now, I believe in open information. The information should be available in libraries. And if they wish to go ahead and monitor their own children, that's fine. That's what being a parent is. But I'm not going to have them parent my child. My child has the freedom to look at the books that she wants to with my supervision, not theirs. So book banning is, or restricted information is a no-go. Second, I don't even know what to say with regards to Jeanne Ives and Columbus, but she really needs to review history. Columbus came over and enslaved the Arawak peoples. I have two degrees in anthropology. I can go into a lot more detail on this and on what happened in North America. But her information is extremely flawed and misinformation. Thank you.
Next up is Brian Campen and after Mr. Campen is Shannon Lujenko.
First of all, I just want to thank you for the stellar job you've been doing with masking at schools and everything else. I was pretty hard on you all at the beginning of the year and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate it. I wanted to talk to you briefly about censorship and civil rights education in schools. It's a deep concern of mine. In May, Tennessee passed a vague CRT ban for all K-12 schools. And this week, Tennessee PAC objected to two 20-year-old books in a Tennessee district's K-12 curriculum. They're MLK and the March on Washington, and Ruby Bridges Goes to School. And they filed suit to ban those books from the curriculum for second graders. These are 20-year-old books. This is censorship of civil rights history and we're in the midst of a nationwide struggle between memory and forgetting unbelievably about civil rights, education, and history. My dad Cyrus is a Southerner and Wheaton College grad. He was captain of his wrestling and football teams and he was kicked out of his family in Thanksgiving 1962 after flying home to rural North Carolina his junior year. At dinner, he announced he'd started to attend a black church and intermarriage was fine by him. And all six uncles and his dad left the table and did not return. They said they knew this would happen if Cyrus went up north. He pierced their delusions and was removed. The end. But past bigotry and delusion pales to the present. CRT bans flipped the table we set and reversed 60 years of civil rights education and progress, ostracized proponents of civil rights, and as in the 1860s and 1960s, paint honest discussion of civil rights as a nefarious plot of some kind. MLK said it would be grossly unfair to omit recognition of a minority of whites who genuinely want authentic equality. Their commitment is real, sincere, and expressed in a thousand deeds, but they are balanced at the other end of the pole by the unregenerate segregationists who have declared that democracy is not worth having if it involves equality. The segregationist goal is the total reversal of all reforms with this re-establishment of naked oppression and if need be, a native form of fascism. America has a master race, had a master race in the pre-war South and re-establishing it with the Klan and a totally disenfranchised lower class would realize the dream of too many extremists on the right. That was 1967, four years after I have a dream and five years after my dad was kicked out of his family.
Thank you, Mr. Campen. Next is Shannon Lujenko and after that is Jennifer Stamp.
Good evening. I have two children attending school in the district. I'm here to talk about the Surgeon General report issued yesterday on students' mental health challenges. If you haven't had a chance to read it, I do urge that you take a look. It's a 53-page report and it calls on a rapid response from schools, teachers, and parents. A few things struck me when I read it. It highlights that there are many, many factors that shape the mental health of young people. It called out things like inequality, discrimination, racism, school climate, and many, many other things. It outlines how the pandemic has increased grief and isolation for our youth. It cited illness and death in families, disruptions in school, and it notes that some groups of children are at higher risk of mental health challenges, including racial and ethnic minority youth, LGBTQ-plus youth, and youth in immigrant populations. It calls on schools to create positive, safe, and affirming school environments and to expand social and emotional learning programs. What was clear to me, reading this advisory, is that our school district's efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion have never been more important, and your efforts around SEL are critical. There are a number of suggestions and resources of things that schools can do now to prioritize mental health. One thing that was not mentioned anywhere in the advisory is the concept that wearing face masks in school leads to negative mental health outcomes. If anything, masking is a tool to keep COVIDs from spreading in schools, which allows our schools to stay open and for kids to stay in person, which we know is critical to their health. The AAP is still stating unequivocally that masks are safe for students and continues to recommend universal masking in schools. Other things that won't help our kids' mental health: book bans, public attacks on kids' teachers and their principals, politically manufactured hot-button things that are not the real day-to-day things that our kids and teachers need in school. And we know that our kids are struggling now. So I urge you to read that advisory, prioritize kids' mental health, and let's come together as a community to put our time and energy toward actual productive solutions that can help our kids. Thank you.
Next up is Jennifer Stamp and after that is Ryan Kipfer.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Stamp. I'm the child of a third grader. When the U.S. Supreme Court desegregated schools in Brown versus Board of Education, they recognized the importance of public education for all races on equal terms. They noted explicitly that public education is not only important to a democratic society, but it is the foundation of good citizenship. There is a lot of talk about patriotism these days, but we rarely talk about good citizenship. Good citizenship isn't decided by skin tone, sexual orientation, or parental choice. In a legal sense, it's defined by the U.S. Constitution, and in daily life, good citizenship lies in how we treat our fellow citizens. It calls for us to form a more public schools or for students from all walks of life. They teach our nation's values, not the values of individual parents. It has never been a parent's choice to dictate the values of a nation. It's the parent's choice to be involved in their child's life. Books are for the public. Inclusion is necessary for a healthy society. And masks are necessary in a pandemic to prevent the spread of COVID. If people disagree with these public values, discuss those private values at home. But political agendas and private beliefs have no place in public education. Thank you.
Next up is Ryan Kipfer and after that is Allison Williams.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Kipfer. I have four children, two of whom would be in the school district, but we are unhappy with the current direction of the school district, so we're doing the homeschool option. There's a lot of things I would want to say, but I only have two minutes. First off, I'll talk about the book banning, what everyone's been talking about is book banning. It's an intentional obfuscation and an obvious red herring. Of course, the schools ban books. They ban books all the time. You know, nobody would suggest that having a collection of Playboy magazines or giving every kid access to the anarchist cookbook is a good idea. So of course, books are banned all the time. And to call it book banning is obviously an attempt to politicize a very simple issue. The book that's been most controversial is the book called Gender Queer. That book visually depicts sex acts between minors. So to say that's a banned book, well, it makes sense that it would be a banned book the same way other books are typically quote-unquote banned. It's not a book banning, it's to protect the kids from visual representations of sexual acts between minor children. Another issue worth discussing would be this constant talk of CRT. Critical race theory is not something that's taught at any level below probably college or advanced school. Critical theory goes back thousands of years with the conflict theory created by, or at least first recorded by Socrates. So, you know, calling it critical race theory is, it's critical theory that's supposed to be presented under the guise of an inclusion and niceness when it's not what it is. Critical theory is designed, was designed by Karl Marx and Antonio Gramsci as a way to undermine Western traditions. It's created solely for the purpose of destroying history, rewriting history, and creating a new history. So calling CRT, it's not CRT, it's critical theory being put in under the guise of compliance...
Next up is Allison Williams and after that is Maggie Romanovich.
After the last board meeting, I heard a community member get on social media and discuss the lack of parent support at that board meeting. After hearing that, I felt it was necessary that I come and speak at this one. Most parents feel like their voices were heard during the election. During the last school board election, almost 60% of the votes went to the safe reopen candidates. Because there were seven safe reopen candidates, one slight candidate was able to slip by as the votes were spread out. That statistic alone tells me that most parents in this community are concerned with proper mitigation strategies to keep our kids safe in schools. Parents do not have time to come to every board meeting and speak publicly. A lot of parents work full-time and have busy schedules. They let their voices be heard during the elections. Furthermore, most parents move to Wheaton for quality school and education. A quality education includes comprehensive sex education and culturally responsive teaching. Studies after study have shown that comprehensive sex education lessons, things like STI transmission, unplanned pregnancies in teens. There is a direct correlation between higher rates of teenage pregnancies in states that have abstinence-only sex education. The state of Illinois mandates comprehensive sex education for all high school students in health class in order to graduate. So I'm not sure why this is being discussed at board meetings. Lastly, I have heard a lot of myths surrounding culturally responsive teaching. Culturally responsive teaching allows teachers to better understand their students and their cultures, to better teach them. Again, I'm not sure why that would be a bad thing. I'd like to end with saying, I am one of those busy parents. I am staying engaged by watching the board meetings, but like others, I do not have time to come to every board meeting and speak. My voice was and always will be voiced during the school board elections. Thank you.
Next up is, last up is Maggie Romanovich.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maggie Romanovich and I'm a resident of Wheaton with two kids at Edison. I'm here in support of the work the district, our administration, and you, Mary, and our teachers are doing to provide a healthy, science-based environment of belonging for our kids and a global public education to our students. I support academic excellence as well as SEL, sex ed, and a global education, representative literature. I support ensuring all of our community members, including those who identify as LGBTQ-plus, feel welcome, that they belong, can be visible, and get the support they need so we can succeed together. And I'm in support of mitigations that have kept our kids healthy during this difficult time and kept COVID rates low. I encourage everyone, all of us, to solve these issues our community is facing together, to get to the same side of the table and approach them not with fear and outrage, but with an open mind, with curiosity, not criticism. We should be facing these problems together and providing solutions that satisfy the purpose of public education, to serve the public. I was inspired to address the board while I was at work taking a course about making sure my workplace is safe and equitable for all of our teammates. The work the district and DEI 200 are doing is preparing our children for those same kind of workplace scenarios, ensuring we are being inclusive to all different kinds of people and thinkers now and into the future. I also thought about who we elected to the board in this last election. We elected those who spoke about their belief in the district's efforts, who believe in science and social-emotional learning and DEI, and some of whom are products of Wheaton's high-quality education. We elected you to support the progress that we must make for our kids, and I appreciate you making those decisions here and now that support that work. And so much of the community supports you, too. Please keep doing this important work for our kids. Thank you very much.
We're on to our consent agenda. First item, approval to post standards for high school dual-credit course, Introduction to Teaching 1 and 2. Approval to post standards for high school course Advanced Level Introduction to Acting. Approval to post standards for high school course Advanced Placement Spanish Literature and Culture. Approval to post standards for high school course Advanced Placement Art History. Approver of driver education waiver. Approval of the Zerographic Bond Paper Bid. Approval of bids for 2022 facility improvements paving at Wheaton-Warnville South High School. Approval of bids for 2022 facility improvements flooring work at three buildings. Approval of bids for 2022 facility improvements roofing work. Approval of bids for 2022 facility improvements tuck pointing at four buildings. Approval of bids for 2022 facility improvements capital improvements door replacements at 11 buildings and foods lab renovation at Wheaton-Warnville South High School. Approval of resolution and final contract for guaranteed energy savings with Performance Services, Inc. for summer 2022 work. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes, November 10th, 2021, open and closed, November 12th, 2021, special meeting with local officials, open and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to July 2020 as allowable by law. And approval of personnel report to include application retirement and leave of absence of administrative-certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any other information you'd like to share?
No additional information other than to thank the facilities committee for helping us to navigate to the final recommendations on our projects for this year, so that's it.
Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Chris, may I ask a question?
Yep.
Just wanted to confirm with the standards for the dual-credit teaching course, Introduction 1 and 2, that's now going to be in partnership with COD.
A little louder, please, Mrs. White.
I don't know if you can, I feel like it's not on. Just wanted to confirm that the standards that are listed in that description come from COD as opposed to...
They mirror the college course.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
I just have one comment, just to echo Dr. Schuler's comments about the facility committee meeting last week. There's several contracts here, this is a little bit less than we had anticipated we would be able to do this coming summer. There's some pretty significant construction cost escalation going on in the marketplace, up about 14% this year alone. So there's certainly some work that we had intended to do that's going to have to get put... to have to get pushed off to future years as a result of that. And that's been reflected in these recommendations.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booten.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up is Oral Reports: Portrait of a Graduate. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, Dr. Slagi is actually going to come up to the podium and give you an update on kind of where we are as we close toward the finish line on that project. So Dr. Slagi?
Yes, thanks, Dr. Schuler. You'll see in your packets also I've included just a one-page handout. And I don't know if it's possible, gentlemen, to minimize the presentation so it's fully visible, if possible. So what you have here is a representation or a draft of the top five competencies and characteristics that emerged from our work. So just a quick recap, right? We started the journey of Portrait of a Graduate in 2019, asking over a thousand of our community members, staff members, students, all folks, right? Really, what are the qualities and skills and characteristics that were desired in our graduates? And we halted that work and then began it again this fall. And this fall, we had multiple community engagement opportunities, as you're aware of. We brought together community members here. We have a design team. We relaunched a thought exchange and a Google survey, asking people not only to provide us new input, but to rate the 10 or 11 themes that had emerged. And as a result of that, and doing a really deep data dive, five emerged. Those five are problem solver, communicator, collaborator, resilient, and academically excellent. Those five you'll see listed here. And then there's a definition underneath them. This definition is not a creation from our senior leadership team. It's actually a compilation of the data and the information that we received from others, right? So really, you'll actually see in some of those pieces, you'll see prior themes that had emerged actually as part of the definition in some of the work. Now, what are our next steps with this, right? So this is really just an update on where the work sits right now. We're currently working with a designer and the draft of the actual Portrait of a Graduate draft and symbol and symbolization should be completed, we hope, by Friday. And we hope to get that to our Portrait of a Graduate design team for review. We're meeting with that team actually on Monday. We're bringing them together, and we're going to review the Portrait of a Graduate drafts, review the language within them, and review actually the symbolism around them with the hope of bringing to you on January 12, the final Portrait of a Graduate, right? And as we said before, that means after that, really, the Portrait of a Graduate can serve as a piece in our strategic planning moving forward. So at this point, really, an update on what has emerged thematically, where the different skills are at, and we hope to bring you a final product in January. So take any questions at this time, if there are any.
I just have one. And I apologize, I just don't quite remember. Were there any big changes from the top five from March 2020 to right now?
Yeah.
Pretty much in line?
Pretty much in line, but one thing that's different, Susan, and this was going to be a part of our work, is we did not ask people to rate them like we did in this roundabout. So this time, we did ask people, two forms, to rate them, their top six in one forum. And then another forum, we really used like a Likert scale, where we asked folks like very important, somewhat important, not as important. And we actually cross-looked at both of those, and you saw these themes emerge pretty significantly. So I think that that was definitive. And then even if we look back further in the data, you see some of these at the top, but this gave a much clearer picture.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Dr. Slagi? I just have one. Do we have an approximate number of people that have given input on this process?
Yeah. The first round, I think we were around 1,200, and that was the round that halted it in the March 2020. On this round, I want to say around 400 to 500 that were involved in giving process and many more ratings that happened in the thought exchange piece. So those are rough numbers. I can get you an exact number of that, but approximate.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a quick one.
Yeah.
Just based on community feedback, I thought somebody asked a really interesting question about the history of where did this come from? And I was wondering if you could say briefly, is there a connection to character counts from maybe several decades ago to Portrait of a Graduate, how they're similar or different in terms of how they'd be implemented in schools?
Can you repeat the question there?
So we used to have character counts back when I was a teacher in this district. And I was trying to point to that as precedent for saying that a community can define sort of characteristics that we hope to instill in our youth. So would character counts be similar or different to Portrait of a Graduate in terms of how it's implemented in schools?
I mean, I will tell you this. I have not implemented character counts, so you know, I don't want to speak as an expert, you know, on that piece. What I would say is, you know, to draw a parallel, that there certainly are characteristics on here that have been identified, right? And implementation of those is probably going to be looking at what do we already do, right, that aligns with this? And then is there programming that we need to look at or that we need to plan for the future as we look at these characteristics? So you know, I don't want to be vague, but I also don't want to speak on character counts not being somebody who's implemented that here.
Yep. I have one more, if that's okay. I'm very supportive of community feedback, so these are great. I just want to recognize that the use of the term resilient, if we're not careful with how that's communicated to our children, whether at times we can communicate unintentionally, specifically around difficult conditions, that if those conditions don't change, that a student should just persist despite difficult conditions can sometimes lead to really negative outcomes. I don't think that's what we intend, but just make sure we're careful with that word when there's actually difficult conditions that students in our schools face every single day that really do need to be addressed. And we're careful with the balance between individual resilience and structural conditions.
I was going to ask, I was curious what number six, like what came in at number six, because I do have concerns with the use of the word resilient as well. I think a lot of adults have difficulty with resiliency, and it's something that you really need life experience to develop in probably, or maybe I'm misinterpreting, to the level of which it seems that we're assuming that an 18-year-old could have, is that? So I'm curious what number six was.
Yeah. There was some close, I believe, with both ethics and empathy, but certainly we can get the board even kind of roll out of what some of the, like, the whole list. But ethics and empathy were both right there, closely in their percentages, and then also in the piece around there. And then just around the difficult conditions piece, I think, obviously, the intention in that wording is around, is really growing and learning from challenges that you face or you take on, right?
I'm sorry, you said empathy and...
Ethics.
Ethics.
Or ethical, ethics, yep.
Any other comments?
And you'll see, I guess what I would say is, you'll then see ethics and empathy reflected in our definitions, right? As you look underneath problem solver and you look under collaborator.
Hey, Chris, it's fantastic. I was just triangulating back to some of the earlier presentations from 19 and 20. And I think it's nicely reflective and connected to all that work we did early, much early on. One theme I see, I would love to see maybe just a few words inserted around the theme of innovation. I think that was really important. And I don't necessarily see, it's probably embedded, right? But in this particular piece of paper, I mean, I just love what we had on our presentation back in 19, which is creative initiates change, thinks outside the box, doesn't settle for status quo. I think that's just really good stuff that I like to see kind of embedded somewhere somehow.
Thank you.
Yeah, theme-wise, right? Not word for word, but theme-wise.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Dr. Yubel, did you have something else?
Just one more on, under academically excellent, I just wanted to clarify with the expectation of mastery of core academic content, is that they address different diverse learners? And whether they're all expected, is it mastery of core academic content to the best of their academic abilities? Or are we maybe unintentionally expecting every single student in our district to master core academic content standard?
Yeah. I think, you know, I think expectations, right? We certainly want to have high expectations for all students, right? That's a part of our learning acceleration plan, right?
Yeah.
In that same breath, a part of that work is blending and differentiating our instruction to meet students where they're at, to help them grow. But that also comes with exposing them to grade-level content and believing in them and really taking them along on their learning journey, but never lowering the bar for them either, right? So you know, I think that that's, the piece is there, right? Like, we do want our kids to have mastery of their core academic skills at each level, right? I personally would relate that to the elementary level, right? We want our kids to have their core math and reading skills so that they're prepared as they go on, so they're prepared to learn, right? So certainly, we know what that standard is. And to get there, it may look different. We may have to put more resources to get some students to a place. And that's our job, right? Allocating different resources and meeting kids where they're at to take them along their learning journey. But certainly, we also want to have the expectation of getting our students to a place where they are mastering their core content. That's our goal and our ambition. But we also treat each student individually.
Yeah. I appreciate that. I think I just want to clarify, like, for our diverse learners, like our students with disabilities, we don't want to erase them, you know, from the conversation. So we just want to make sure how do we include the possibility of all different kinds of students who have all different kinds of strengths, and whether they're not able to be reflected in this. So we don't want any child to think, I can't do that, and so I'm not what the district wants me to be, that kind of thinking. But I do appreciate your answer, though.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Slagi?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I was on the, fortunate enough to be on the last group session at Wheaton North back right before COVID hit. And I will be there on Monday night representing the board, so I'm looking forward to that discussion. And as I was thinking back, even before the last meeting in March of last year, I remember Dr. Slagi giving us a presentation on SEL, actually. And the observation I made in that meeting was that it was a lot about skills. SEL is all about the skills, how to be resilient, how to communicate your challenges. And so I think as I look at this, you know, I look at the old model of what school was. It was all about the teacher, like, delivering information, delivering knowledge, and testing away to see how well they remember that at that point in time. And I think the new generation, or next generation, forward-looking model of learning is all about skills. I mean, I see that all the time in my workforce. It's all about the skills. And so what I like about this is it's, both are recognized. Certainly, the foundation of everything we do is going to be how much knowledge and mastery of those skill, mastery of that knowledge that our students learn. But if we're going to be successful as a school district and prepare our kids for college or career, they have to have these skills. So what I like about this is it covers both. And you know, as it says at the bottom here, this is not just about a piece of paper. You know, I think we were mocked at a recent meeting that we were even thinking about a Portrait of a Graduate, but this is a critical tool to lead to new curriculum design, to have those different student experiences for our kids, to lead to a strategic plan that sets the path forward. And so I believe, as I've stated for a while, that this is one of the most important things we do. I fully endorse this. I look forward to the conversation and look forward to the opportunity to move forward for the district.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that really quick? I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Paulson said. As he's, as an employer with my husband and I, it's the same issue as we're trying to hire people. It's a skill set. And that there's people who can do, like, say, I have this ability, but if you can't pay attention to detail, you can't collaborate with people, and you can't be resilient when you make a mistake and figure it out and take the constructive criticism and be, figure out how to improve, that, you know, that makes it difficult. So I think that all of these skills are very important. Just again, to piggyback on what you said, it made me think, as an employer, that we've come across the same things and that all of these soft skills to really make a difference as people are interviewing and looking for employment. So I agree that, I think this is great, and thank you for all the work that you've done on this.
Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Slagi. Next up is our COVID-19 data report. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, Dr. Slagi, can you bring me the clicker by chance? Is it up there? Thank you. Thank you. We're having a technical difficulty on the display. So I'm going to share with the board your monthly COVID data update. This is in your packet, and so I'm giving it just a second here. There we go. Thank you. All right. So similar information to what we've shared at each of your recent monthly board meetings. Data as of this point in the week, so this is not yet weekly end data, but this date as of noon today, we've had 33 positive cases this week, five positive staff cases, which you can see in the little chart on the bottom, as I had shared with the board at the end of last week. Last week was by far our high point, both in this school year, but also actually in the calendar year in terms of case activity as we came back off of the break. Cases per 100,000, we have also seen a speak, a spike here in kind of the time leading up to Thanksgiving. And we've continued to see that post Thanksgiving. We're actually around 350 cases per 100,000 as of today. So we've definitely seen a little bit of an increase. We're giving you just a couple of reference points, so you see some other points in the pandemic and where we are. So by no means are we at the peak that we've seen in terms of the pandemic, but we're definitely at a little bit of a high point. Actually, this redundant information as to what was on the first chart in terms of cases as of noon today. Students quarantined for close contact, especially in school. We've continued, we've seen a little bit of an increase in the last two weeks in that data. That's largely been driven actually at high school, some issues especially around lunch at the high school that's driven a few of those numbers up. Our two high schools really didn't see a lot of case activity early in the week, but we have in the last couple of weeks, seen a little bit of a drive up in our high school data. Good news is, we continue to move as many students as we can through tests to stay instead of quarantine. So we currently have 14 students in our tests to stay protocol. We've moved 81 students all the way through our tests to stay protocol. Again, that is not the aggregate number of tests, that's the number of individual students that have moved through there. Our positivity rate for all of the tests that we've done as a part of tests to stay is 1.3, a little over 1.3%. Vaccination levels, we've continued to see slight uptick at our high school level. Really, we've plateaued around 78%. We're at 77% for a long time and have kind of plateaued at 78%. We have seen an uptick in our middle school data as that opportunity opened to younger students. We've now climbed to about 66% first dose for vaccine. And then you see the difference as we move forward to full vaccine status. Again, at the high school level, those two numbers are much closer. That opportunity's been available. You start to see at the middle school level, we will see in the next couple of weeks, where full vaccine will get a little closer to that partial rate. We do continue to do outbreak investigations. Just as a reminder, the current outbreak is defined as three cases that exist within a building. So every week, we do do a number of outbreak investigations. We have had a few of our sites that have been tagged based on case activity. But we do have a solid protocol that we continue to put in place to address any issues if we see them within our but we do have a solid protocol that we continue to put in place to address any issues if we see them within our schools. Mentioned on, on this outbreak chart that we have done 255 outbreak investigations since the beginning of the year. So thank you to both our health staff and Julie Ozmkowski, Dr. Slaggy, that have done that work. And then I just want to mention that we do continue to chart activity in the, in that MIT tool, and, and we continue to show that we exceed kind of where we were in our thresholds last year. So even with numbers increasing, certainly at least within that tool, the increase in vaccination status helps to, to offset that. So we, we do still, as we monitor that in the background, show that that puts us in a safe spot. So that's all I've got in terms of, of your COVID data, similar to what I've presented in, in recent months. So happy to answer. Any questions you have?
Questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
Do we have any data on elementary vaccination? Do we have any data on elementary vaccination?
We're, we're starting to, to gather that. I believe, last look, first dose were about 30%, a little over 30%. So we're, we're pulling that in the same way we have the middle and high school.
Okay. And then the only other thing I wanted to say is I, I try once a week or so to go on the American Academy of Pediatrics website just to see what, any updates they have or, you know, any new changes in guidance or anything like that. And I came across the article from December 2nd on their news page, and it stated that the, they're looking at districts who are keeping exposed children in school by having them wear masks and getting tested repeatedly, meaning like tests to stay. And then they said the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention will be releasing data on these approaches, quarantine and testing in the coming weeks. So I just wanted to let you all know that, that, you know, there may be some information coming, at least according to American Academy of Pediatrics. But, you know, I, I know I, that's what I keep an eye out for, you know, is something coming as we have all this data on testing kids in school and, you know, can we keep more of these close contacts in school with the test to stay programs? And so I don't know what that means, obviously, but I will, you know, I'll definitely be keeping an eye out for that, and hopefully we'll see some information coming from there. So I appreciate the updates and the, the information that the district is providing on a daily basis. I know a lot of people appreciate that, so thank you for that work.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
I have some.
Yep.
But Dave, did you, or, sorry, I thought I interrupted you. So I'm thankful that we are at the point where we have vaccines available. We have therapeutics that are becoming available, and I'm curious going forward if our district, or if we, I guess as a board, have a plan to move out of some of the mitigations, both quarantine and masking. Any feedback, input ideas? I, I know that there is, there are some districts who are advocating to our governor to try and pilot different programs that could demonstrate safety with removing mitigations. I don't think they've been responded to at this point, but is there a point in the future that we are, like, what is the, the end game, I guess? When do we want to consider that? And I guess maybe I should back up a little and acknowledge that we have, as a board, decided to, I don't know if it was, decided to follow the mandate. But I think I would, I personally would like to recognize that following the mitigations doesn't come without some level of harm. And at what point do we look at our children, their mental health, their ability to develop language, expressive skills, social interactions, emotional strength? Like, at what point are we going, are we waiting for the governor's blessing? Is that?
Are you asking a question to me?
I, I'm asking whomever would like to answer. I, I think it's unclear to me. I feel, I, I will be honest, I come here tonight having had some individual conversations with administration and staff over the past several weeks, and I feel disappointed that, at the, at the, at the prospect of leaving here again tonight, not knowing that there is hope for getting out of the mitigations during the school year while we have young students who are being affected by them.
I don't think anybody denies that. I think that's what's hard for me is the implication that we don't care about that, and that's so not true at all. I mean, I know I deal with it in my own home, and so I, we're all dealing with it. And, but at the same time, I'm not an epidemiologist, I, I'm not a virologist, I'm not an infectious disease doctor. That's what the American Academy of Pediatrics, our World Health Organization, our CDC, our local health departments, those are the health officials who look at this data and determine what is the safest, best thing for us to do during a global health pandemic, and that's who I look to, and that's why I go on the American Academy Pediatrics. You know, I try to go on weekly to see what they're saying, to see if anything has changed. And as of now, they haven't changed that, and their sole mission and purpose is the health and safety of children. And so I defer to them at this point, and we are still under a mandate. Our law firms and our insurance companies have made it very, very, very clear that if we don't follow those protocols, that we have a lot of exposure in our district. So it doesn't mean we have to like it. None of us are here being like, yes, you know.
I think it's good to have discussion in the public, and I apologize, I did not mean to implicate that, you know, and when someone doesn't care, I just don't want to speak for the board or speak for anybody else but myself. So I, I do recognize, I'm sure all of us are parents, that we care. So I don't mean to implicate that anyone is not caring. I think my frustration lies too in that we can look at every state surrounding us where students, whom our students will compete with as they go forth from Wheaton School, Wheaton Warrenville Schools, are interpreting guidelines differently. I just want to advocate for, and be a voice for the, the kids who are having a difficult time, who are developmentally fragile in their, their growth right now. But I appreciate, I appreciate Susan sharing her point of view. I don't want to assume, though, that everyone else has that same thought.
I guess that's what I'm asking you. Are you, are you asking board members to say we, what is it that you're asking? Are you asking us to not follow the mandate?
I'm not asking not to follow the mandate, I just would like to know. Do we have some, is, you know, I guess, Chris, maybe that is the question. Are we committed that we will not make any changes until the mandate is gone?
Are you asking, who are you asking that question of? The board or?
Just ever individually, if, you know, I mean, is that our commitment? That, that there isn't going to be no change for the children until the mandate is dropped?
I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm happy to chime in. Do you want to chime in first?
Yeah, just to say, but my point of view is until there's a change in the mandate, there's not a discussion to have.
Okay.
That's my point of view. That's one of seven, that's me.
For me, it's also important, you know, and I don't want to put this a bit for, for me, I just want to go on record that I don't agree with continuing to mask and quarantine healthy children, and I just want that to be stated, and I am happy with stating that.
It just, one contextual point, and it's a little bit what Susan said. And I don't think it's intentional, but in the words, you're saying it's, somewhat implies we don't support that point. We don't care. And I, I'm telling you, it's unintentional, right? But I'm saying, how I feel personally when you say that, I feel like you're telling me I don't care, and that, that hurts.
I agree.
It's, it's just, Susan, hold on. It's, and Angela, I know it's unintentional, I get it. You and I have talked about this several times, right? But it just, I want you to know that. And I hope you know I care.
That's what keeps me, I should just be quiet and.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, it's just, I'm telling you how I feel as well. You were saying how you feel, I'm saying how I feel. And I think that's a good conversation, right? That's all.
That's fair, thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to chime in before I chime in?
Yeah, I'll chime in as somebody, as one of the people who dealt with this for the last year and a half. There's, I mean, there's no way you're going to make everybody happy, of course not, we know that. You know, right now, we're living under a mandate, and anybody can claim that it's legal or not legal. Right now, that hasn't been decided by the state, so we're operating under that. When we get to that point where the mandate is lifted and the numbers indicate that it's safe, I would be willing to have a conversation about relaxing some of the mitigations, just like we did last summer when the numbers were substantially different than they are now. Up until, up, so up until then, there's nothing really for us to discuss. On that caveat, I totally understand and support the mental health issues that our students and staff are going through. I would rather spend time trying to focus on that than talk about things that we can't control right now.
Thank you.
And so that's my opinion.
Dr. Ebel?
I just want to say I always support asking difficult questions, always. So I affirm Angela's question, I think it's an important one, even if it comes across that we, we don't care. That's an important point to clarify because that's part of the rhetoric about whether or not you care about kids, but we've clarified that, and she, I think you've clarified that, Angela. So I just want to affirm that we should always be asking a question as to whether we're considering all the dynamics at play in a very difficult time. Fair question, I think several of us have answered it. I think Brad, in terms of a concise looking at the data, like we've done, continue to look at the data, continue to look at conflicting data, which I, we see evidence of in Chris's work at SEL. I think Dr. Schuler gives us tons and tons of data, Susan provided some data, all kinds of data. Continue to look at the data, continue to ask really difficult questions. Is where do these trade-offs meet, right? Really important question.
Thank you. Mr. Long, do you have anything?
Yeah. I, I support considering going against the mandate at some point. I don't think that point is now with the rise that we've seen. I mean, I struggle with certain aspects of it. You know, I've had, you know, I've said this repeatedly, I don't understand how my senior in high school sitting four feet away from somebody in her classroom has to wear a mask, but then at the football game where they're packed in like sardines, they don't need a mask. And I hear this airborne and, you know, that's just a bunch of crap. They're outside, there's spits flying everywhere. So I struggle with that. But the fact is, the numbers are going up. I deal with it in my workplace where we, you know, we're putting more stringent, you know, we have, I have to wear a mask unless I'm in my office by myself. It was getting a little looser, but now, I mean, we're having, our numbers are mirroring what's happening in, in the county. We're in Kane County, but they're very similar. And so I'm not ready to take that risk, given what's happening now. Where the numbers were coming down, you know, after we had that peak, after, you know, we had that lull in July, and then they went up. You know, they were starting to come down, and I thought, you know, if they, if they come down and we feel like the mandate should be lifted and it's not being lifted, I think we should have that conversation. But I don't think the time is, is now, given where the numbers are. So that's kind of where I stand on it. And I agree with Mary totally about raising the opinions. There's a lot of things that get set around this table. I'm never going to argue about those opinions. I support your right to express your opinion. If I feel strong enough to say something, I will. But I encourage everybody to speak their minds, whether they're only, the only one with that opinion. So thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, Dave.
And finally, me. I'm not at a point where I feel that I would want to go against a mandate right now. I, I want to keep our kids in school. That is, that is my main goal, is that our children are staying in school. And if, if we have to wear masks and have other mitigations in the meantime, if that's going to keep kids in school, I, I'm supportive of that. And so at this time, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of going against a mandate.
Is there anybody, have any other questions regarding the COVID report for Dr. Schuler or anybody else? Okay. We'll move on to action items. The first one is acceptance of the 2021 audit. Dr. Schuler?
Yep, Dr. O'Keefe's coming up to the podium, and he's going to introduce your auditor to share a couple of comments with you.
Yep, good evening, this is Nick Cavallini. He's a partner at Pecatelli and the lead of our audit. Pecatelli's been doing audit work for the district now for a few years. They do a great job. We have a very good relationship between ourselves and the firm, and I'm happy to introduce Nick and let him talk to you about the audit. Well, thank you for the introduction. The board should have received copies of the audited financial statements in addition to a required communication report that goes over some information relating to our audit procedures and the results of our audit. I'm going to provide a high-level summary to the board and open the floor to any questions that you may have. You know, a set of governmental financial statements have a lot of different schedules within them, and there's a lot of information, a lot of numbers that are reiterated. The district's financial statements, the results for the year were not necessarily concerning in the least. Were in line with, with some expectations, some transfers were performed for capital project work. You know, overall, when I looked at your financial position comparatively and also looking at some other metrics with the state's annual financial report, which is a financial profile score, the district was, was in, in good shape. The type of audit opinion that we rendered on your financial statements is what you would call an unmodified audit opinion. That is essentially the highest level of assurance that you can receive from the external auditor that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, have the necessary disclosures, and don't contain any necessarily material misstatements or errors. We have a very robust audit approach. We audit a lot of school districts in the, in the state of Illinois. The work that we do is extensive. We conduct an audit over the financial statements. We conduct an audit over the annual financial report. The district is subject to what they call a single audit, which is a federal compliance audit as to how you've utilized your federal award dollars. That audit is still ongoing. There was delays in the information provided to auditors nationally as to how to conduct those audit procedures, and we took time to digest that information once it was released, and we're actually ongoing right now performing those procedures. We'll issue our reports on that at a later date, but based on some of the preliminary information that we've received, I don't anticipate any concerns. One of the things that we do when we perform a financial statement audit is gain an understanding of the internal controls over the preparation of the financial statements themselves. What that involves is a series of walkthroughs over key transaction cycles. We look at the financial statements and we say, where are the risks that there can be errors in these financial statements? We gain an understanding of your internal control structure. We gain an understanding of your processes, staffing assigned duties, and then we tailor an audit approach to address those risks. We solely do that for the purposes of designing our audit approach. We don't actually provide assurances over the effectiveness of your internal controls. However, in conducting that, I guess, assessment and also in conducting the audit, if we identify any risks in that process, we'll communicate those to the governing body and to management and provide some recommendations for improvement. I'm pleased to let the board know that we did not identify any material weaknesses, and essentially, we did not have any matters for future consideration as it relates to those procedures. So, you know, ultimately, a clean audit, no material weaknesses identified, and I'd be more than happy to take any questions regarding the financial statements or the audit approach itself.
Does the process review and the controls include a segregation of duties analysis as well?
Yes, so, so what we will look at is a holistic view of the operations and then also compensating controls that are in place. In some instances, you may not be able to segregate a process fully, but then you'll have monitoring controls that will help mitigate that risk to detect potential, you know, mistakes or things of that nature.
Thank you. And then in my experience outside of school district, the partnership or the lead partner on the audit changes over time, right? To create independence, do we do the same thing in, in our relationship?
Yes. Yes. So I've only been working with the school district for two years. So this is my second year of working with you. You know, years prior, you know, you had a different firm, and at one point in time, you know, Baker Tilly also did work for the school district as an auditor. So I'm very fresh to your organization. You know, last year was our first year performing the audit. This year is year two. We learned a lot about you. We actually did more work this year, because there was a software change. So in year two, all your software changed. So that was basically like a brand-new client all over again, coming in and looking at the conversion, the new account numbers, spending more time looking at how that process changed during the year. So, you know, I think that we're doing a pretty good job. When we're performing the audit, we're asking a lot of good questions. We're looking for, you know, things to make sure that you have good controls in place. If we see anything that we believe is concerning, we'll bring it to your attention. But I do believe that there's a lot of monitoring controls in place. And I think that this new accounting software system will continue to allow the district to look into new opportunities to maybe generate different reports, or have some better monitoring controls than your previous system capabilities even had to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have two parts. I'll answer, ask the first question, and then I'll come back with a follow-up comment. I always need clarification on this. The report says that the total cost of all district programs was $276 million. But when we approved our budget in September of 2020, we had revenue of $180 and expenditures of $176. What's the delta?
Okay. So this is the question that I get at every school district board meeting that I go to. It's a very good question.
That makes me feel better.
Yeah. It's a very good question. So, external financial statements have some amounts recorded in them that you don't necessarily think about on your day-to-day operations. The one primary difference is what they call an on-behalf payment, okay? So your school district has employees that participate in the teacher's retirement system and the teacher's health insurance system. They're mandated by law to participate in these pension and other post-employment benefit systems. Under the current accounting standards, the district's employees are the district's employees. The state of Illinois does not employ them. However, the state of Illinois is making contributions to those pension and other post-employment benefit systems on the district's behalf. So the state of Illinois makes contributions to the TRS system and the THIS system for your employees. That dollar amount is measured at the fund level, and then also at the entity-wide financial statement level, their estimates. And those are recognized in your financial statements as revenues and expenditures. They have no impact on your ending fund balances. So ultimately, the accounting standard board believes that these amounts are important to be recognized, because they do present the financial statements in a more complete picture as to what those ongoing costs are for providing, you know, benefits to your employees, even though the state of Illinois is making those contributions directly.
That's what I thought the answer was. But thank you for that clarification. And then, just kind of one other point. I think I read in there, so we have a, projected to have a 3.9 financial rating, which is one notch below 4, which is the highest rating possible. And I think the comment was that it's our fund balance policy holding us back from that 4.0. Is that a, am I remembering that properly?
So I looked at the financial profile score calculation before the meeting, because I, sometimes this is something that comes up in conversations. And the metric that gave you the three was the ratio of days of cash on hand to your expenses, and what the state's profile score uses for the funds. So they look at your ed fund, your operations and maintenance fund, your transportation fund, and your working cash fund. So that ratio that you had, I believe, was somewhere's around 150 days of cash on hand, essentially taking the ending cash position in those funds, and dividing it into the operational expenses of those funds. 150 days. I believe to get a four on there, you would require 180 days on that metric.
So that means we would have to have more fund balance in place to have more days to go from 150 to 180?
I would say cash, not fund balance. Because the ratio that is giving you the three is the cash on hand to expenses.
So that's a, ties me to a question, a conversation we had at the facility committee meeting. And first off, I don't think it really matters if we have a 3.9 or 4. It's the same financial rating system. But when we were talking about facility improvements last week, we realized that the cash flow that we experience in the end of the school year, before the tax receipts come in in June, June, is, was, is something we need to consider as we think about how we move our fund balance every year into the, to pay the annual bills, and that we have to have stuff left to pay capital improvements as we get into the summer before the tax receipts come in. So there was some conversation, and we may be having these conversations in the future, is do we need to raise our fund balance policy from a 25% minimum floor to something higher to help facility improvement cash flow, for example? I don't think it's something we need to deal with now. I just know that that 25%, is that the state minimum? I think that's the state minimum.
Well, it, there's a project, there's a suggested rate, not official minimum, but that in order to hit certain financial metrics.
So that policy, our policy, 25 to 40, has been in place, at least since I've been here. We may want to consider adjusting that in the future.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a couple things.
Yep.
The, so our net position got better, which is a good thing, right?
Yes.
And that's primarily because of the debt we paid down?
That was the driving factor of that, yes.
And the fact that we had a change in leadership, you know, with Mr. Farley retiring and Dr. O'Keefe coming in, my sense, I'm not a government accounting guy. I am an accountant in manufacturing companies, and you often have differences in interpretation on certain things, certain reserves. There's a lot of changes I've made in my new job this year that were very, very different last year. Seems like there's less opportunity for that, and probably with stronger controls. But I, my comment is, it's a good thing, and it doesn't appear like we had a lot of things that changed or were different as a result of a change in the leadership in that role.
No, I don't, I would say that I don't believe that we had any issues in conducting the audit. Mr. O'Keefe kind of inherited those results. Ms. Flumphauser was, was present, you know, for all of last year, and we worked directly with her on a lot of the detailed questions. And she oversaw, you know, the system conversion, and was, was a wealth of information to us in conducting the audit, and gaining an understanding of that process, and what took place during the year. You know, Brian and I had a lot of conversations over this document before it was issued, going over the information. A lot of very good questions. You know, okay, help me understand what, you know, what some of this is, from your perspective. I inherited some of these numbers. I'm looking at it for the first time. We conduct a very detailed analysis at the end of our audit, looking at some benchmarks, comparing prior year to budgeted expectations and things like that. And Brian and I both spent, you know, I think it was probably somewhere's around an hour and a half, two hours on the phone, going all those numbers, trying to help, you know, bring in some of the information that we garnered from the audit for that historical year, to share some of those insights. So I think it was, it was a good working relationship during the year, and a lot of good questions were asked. As somebody who's sitting in that position, that inherits, you know, a set of numbers that they really weren't around for, for the year. There's a lot that you can learn from looking back.
Oh, absolutely. I guess, but it just, it seems that the transition's gone very well, that we should probably keep Dr. O'Keefe around for a little while.
I think that would impair independence if I give you a statement on that. No, just kidding.
Yeah.
I'm, you know, he did a nice job. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Long, thank you for your summary. That's very helpful for us to digest this very large reading that he did. So if there's no other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion in a sec.
Oh, I just had a comment. I was, and to echo Ms. Crabtree as well, Mr. Long, thank you for the summary and for answering questions that I had. And also echoing yourself, Dr. O'Keefe was very patient in answering a lot of questions for me as a novice, looking at these reports. So I appreciate it.
I will ask for a motion in a second to accept the 2020-2021 financial audit prepared by Baker Tilly, US LLP, as presented.
So moved.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Me.
Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Onto the second action item, adoption of the 2021 levy. Dr. O'Keefe, it's back to you.
Nothing like talking about a levy after an audit presentation. So we reviewed this, the levy with our finance committee early last week, and just want to present it now to the group as a whole. Did I do something to make this look different than it does? Maybe it's not in presentation, though. We'll start. We'll figure this out. Part of the levy, and certainly this is our 2021 levy, so it's taxes related to this specific calendar year. The board each year approves a levy, and that levy is the majority of our revenue for our school district in a given financial year. Just a few key terms, what the levy means, and we hear a lot of things out about a levy, really in the end, and I'll explain this in a bit. A levy's a pretty simple process theoretically, but it's difficult on how we get to the point where we get. So a few terms that you'll hear. You'll hear tax cap, or you'll hear PTIL. And PTIL is a property tax extension limitation law. That, in essence, is a tax cap that was initiated within the state just about 20 years ago. It limits our ability to ask for more than, no more than 5% of the prior year's extension. It does not mean that our total levy could not be 5% higher, when we take other factors into account, and I'll explain that now. But just in terms of year-over-year dollars, what was extended last year, times a percentage cannot exceed 5%. CPI, that's the method, or that's the instrument that we use to help determine the levy. CPI is issued at the end of, really in the second week of each December. It's numbers from December that come out specifically in January, and it gives us a guide on specifically what our potential tax increases could look like, something that means everything to a homeowner, or property owners, equalized assessed valuation. So in the state, by code, we are not to be taxed more than 1/3 of our equalized assessed value of the property or properties that we own. And then a tax rate or limiting rate. Specifically, it is defined as a limiting rate, but if you just look at it, it's a tax rate. So ultimately, if you're interested in just a quick math summation for yourself, if you look at your equalized assessed value of your property, divide it by 100, then you multiply it by the limiting rate, and that gives you an idea what your taxes would look like specifically for that levy year. Sorry, guys, you might have to move this around a little bit. So CPI, again, that's the figure that this is all driven by. It's provided on a monthly basis by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it's a measure of changes in prices of time, overtime of goods and services. While the CPI is a measure of changes in costs, it may not necessarily directly correlate to running a school district, because it might not be in conjunction with the types of contracts that we have in place with our certified and classified staff. Little history on CPI. So seven, seven-year history here. The average is about 1.6%. The CPI that is being used for this tax levy is 1.4%. The CPI that has been announced at least through October in this current calendar year is at 6.2%. So that number right now would exceed what the tax cap is. We should find out Friday morning at 8:30, what the CPI number is for the month of November, which will give a little more guidance on what potentially December will look like when that's published in the second week of January. Second week of January is when we'll know for sure for all public education systems in the state of Illinois, specifically what CPI is, and how that impacts our levy for the next levy year, which will be levy year '22. Little history with EAV. Recession late 2000s, early 2000s, EAV dropped, has come back, and now actually come to a point where it's greater than it was before the prior recession. We're at about $3.4 billion in equalized assessed value within our community. The spread of what that EAV looks like from a township perspective is split between three different townships. The majority is within Milton Township. That's roughly 84% of our total EAV is within Milton Township, a little more than 14% within Winfield Township, and then we have a small piece, less than 2% within Naperville Township. The description of EAV, the vast majority is born on taxpayers that are residents. So residential is almost 80%. Makeup of our EAV, a little more than 10%, excuse me, little, should have brought my glasses, about 18%, 17% on the commercial side, a small chunk on the industrial side. You don't really even see farms or railroad, because that's a very, very small piece to that, too. Just looking at projections, EAV is an important part of the tax levy process, and understanding where EAV may progress to is always a difficult conversation between those in my position and our assessors within each of our townships. Our EAV at the end of, for levy year 2020, you see on the left is a little bit more than $3.4 billion. We're projecting an EAV of about $3.5 billion this year. And then, as you can see, increases over the next couple years till we get to levy year 2025. And I'll talk about where that's coming from here in just a second. So change in EAV, if my forecasts are accurate, last year was a 2.5% increase in our EAV. We're looking at more than a 3.5% this year, a much greater percentage next year, and part of that is driven by TIF number two in Wheaton, which has more than $40 million in incremental EAV that will actually be coming off of the city's books. Those taxes will move back into the other public bodies, the Park District and the School District. So when TIFs expire, it's not a new tax. It's not something that will be a new tax to the taxpayer. It's just the shifting of where those tax dollars go. And they'll be coming back to the Park District and our School District here next year. And you see just some, about a 3% increase, projected increase in EAV in levy years '23 through '25. Existing EAV, so the EAV change is really made up of two different pieces. What are the property, the existing property values? How are they increasing, decreasing, or staying flat? That's one piece. The property values, our EAV values, last year, were a little bit over 2%. We're projecting 2.5 for this year, and then a flat 2% for the next four levy years. Then there's the other piece, which is new construction. New construction is, literally, new construction, or things like TIFs that come off the rolls from the city or municipality, and come back to school district. So in terms of EAV growth, we had a little bit less than $14 million in new properties in the 2020 levy year. We're projecting almost $40 million for this year. And the way that new property works is if, if it's identified, and, and we miss it, we lose it in perpetuity. So if we were, if there would be, let's say, for instance, $50 million in EAV, this EAV, new construction this year, and we only budgeted for 40 million, we would only get credit for 40 million, and we'd lose that, that difference in perpetuity. So I think that's going to be $40 million in new construction this year. I don't, not based on the information given back to us from the township assessors, but it's going to be close. And I want to make sure that we don't miss it, because again, when you miss it, you miss it in perpetuity. Next year's going to be the big, the big change, where we have new construction that we're projecting at roughly $35 million in new construction for the next four levy years, plus the TIF number two from Wheaton that comes off. That is then considered new growth and new EAV. So how does this all work together? So ultimately, if CPI is flat, if the values of our properties don't change, then really the tax rate doesn't change. This is an inverse relationship. If our EAV increases, our tax rate should decrease. If our EAV decreases, our tax rates increase. And you can see, there's periods of time here where that has been specific. So from 2005 through 2009, we had an increase in EAV. The tax rate dropped. We hit the recession. That was for another five years of levy, between '10 and '14. And from 2015 on, in terms of levy years, we've been seeing increases in our EAV. levy years, we've been seeing increases in our EAV with declining rates in our taxes. Just another depiction of what that looks like. It is an inverse relationship. The orange is the tax rate. So you see the tax rate was much lower in 2008 when we had a high EAV. EAV dropped, the tax rate increased. The tax rate has decreased now as EAV has increased over the last five years, too. Just a look at, a five-year look at our tax rates. Starting in 2016, we're about $5.11 all-in between all funds, and we've dropped now in the 2020 levy back down to $4.85, and we're projecting with an increase in EAV that this number will drop again for levy year 21. Another just depiction of our tax rates, the vast majority of those tax rates do go into what could be referred to as the general fund or our education fund. That's where the vast majority of our overall expenditures within the district reside. Last year's levy, the actual extension itself, so it's in two pieces. There's the aggregate extension, which is the operational side of things. The final extended levy from the DuPage County Clerk for last year was $144,944,817, and then the debt piece specific to payments for levy year 2020 was $20,938,790. I'm showing this to you because you will see just the difference here in a couple slides as our debt payments actually are reducing, beginning with levy year 2021. Speaking of debt, we're at, for levy year 2021, we have a little bit more than $18 million in debt we have to pay. That actually gets paid out in next fiscal year, so it'll be in fiscal year '23 where those debt payments are made, because our fiscal year is run from July 1st to June 30th. We have the same, almost the same exact dollar amount debt payment that we will ask for and build into the 2022 levy, and then we have a reducing number for '23, another reduction in levy year '24, and then assuming no changes at this point in time, specifically, we would not have a debt portion to our levy when looking at levy year 2025. Fund balance history, mentioned before, talked about. We have not inserted the new levy, or the new, excuse me, fund balance history into here since we had not formally adopted the audit, but our new levy, excuse me, our new fund balance history and percentage for last fiscal year is 33.3. So we've been in that range. You know, board policy is 25% to 40%. We've been in a range of roughly 30% to 35% over the last six fiscal years. And one thing, getting back to what I mentioned before. So the tax levy itself, everything that you have to do to put it together is the challenging part, but really theoretically, the formula is fairly simple. And here's an example using what we've done to build this year's levy. So last year's aggregate levy, so on the operational side, was $144 million that I mentioned already. We multiply that by CPI. CPI from December of 2020 was 1.4%. That gives us a new operational levy number. That's the baseline for our overall levy. Then we have to factor in new construction. New construction is anything that is deemed new as of January 1st of that calendar year. We're projecting $40 million. If we take that $40 million, we multiply it by what the limiting or tax rate is anticipated, that gives us new money. So that those are new taxes. It's not new taxes to all of us. It's new taxes to those whose property was either increased in terms of scope, or maybe a house was torn down and rebuilt. That's new construction. It's not the value of your home. It's what was specifically done to your home to add value that's in a new purpose. We take the 146 million here, we add in the 1.678, then we add in our debt service, and that's the total levy. So again, conceptually, just from a numeric perspective, it's fairly simple. It's all the aggregate data that we have to put together behind the scenes to make sure that we're providing you with what we believe to be an accurate levy. It's something that represents the district in a fair and consistent manner. If this is perfect to the dollar, which we know it won't be, but if it is perfect to the dollar, our operational levy for 2021 would be a little bit more than $148.6 million, and our debt levy would actually drop down to a little bit less than $19 million. So you can see a bit of a shift there in terms of the overall pie and the breakdown itself. Little look at what the levy looks like from a dollar perspective by fund. You can see that between asking for CPI and then including $40 million in new property, we are projecting a levy increase of 2.56%. There is a specific piece of school code that says we must hold a truth and taxation, excuse me, truth and taxation hearing. If we are going to be asking for more than 5% on the operational levy side, we have not hit that number, so there's no need for that hearing this year. When you factor in the reduction in our debt service and you look at our total expected levy, we're looking at a mere 1% increase year-over-year, and that is only going to be realized if, in fact, there's $40 million worth of new construction that comes onto the books. If it's less than $40 million, it will impact what that bottom line percentage is. Few things just to consider when we're looking at the levy. We certainly have to build in our first major payment in the springtime of the fiscal year. It doesn't come until, we've seen some good numbers in May in the past and then some light numbers, but June is the big month. So we always have to include what we're projecting out in terms of levies into our budget, even before we bring the levy to you. We certainly have to capture new construction costs and make sure we don't miss any of those dollars. There is continued uncertainty at the state level from my perspective, and what I would, not what I'm concerned about, but what I think can easily be touched is something called mandated categoricals. So we pay for all of our transportation, regular and special ed, in advance. Each summer submits a reimbursement claim to the state of Illinois, and the state pays us in that next fiscal year to reimburse us, and traditionally, it's been at a proration, ranking anywhere from 80 to 95%. I do not believe, from a political perspective, that EBF will be touched. That's $7 billion worth of expense that the state puts into and funds into school districts each year, but I do believe if for some reason the state had to look at cutting some dollars that it was affording back to public education, they would look at mandated categoricals. It's a little bit different than the EBF side of things, and certainly I don't think the state would have any interest in changing the EBF formula, considering all of the effort and time that's been put in a number of years ago to build us to this point. We still expect the state to make their investments in our school districts, but I'd say if there is a potential point of weakness from the state perspective, at least from my perspective, would be on what we call the MCAT side of things. And then finally, we are obviously continuing to use and build our fund balances to support all the capital projects that thankfully, and I appreciate you all approved tonight, and have continued to approve on an annual basis for the last several years. So our overall recommendation is that we accept the 1.4% CPI, use that in our total levy calculation, and then move forward.
Questions or comments? Any questions or comments for Dr. O'Keefe?
I don't have any, I don't have any questions, but I have a couple of comments. First off, I'm thrilled to see a net levy increase of just over 1%. That's pretty amazing. I think, I think our taxpayers would be extremely happy in that number, especially what's going on in the marketplace right now. And this is, as you referred to, the debt restructuring or the debt service levy amount. This is a result of many years of planning that the board before us have gone through and restructured that debt service levy, which essentially through those four phases saved about $10 million for the taxpayers. This is not money we had that we could spend elsewhere. This is money that we didn't have to ask for, and we're seeing that in this, with this drop and the debt service levy of this year versus last year. So the declining steps that we see on slide 17 provide us an opportunity to make continued facility improvements. As we've seen earlier tonight, we are experiencing cost escalation, labor issues, supply chain issues that are directly impacting our ability to make facility improvements. We are deferring work that we had hoped to do, and I think if, and I've said this kind of before in prior meetings, that if we plan strategically, these future year drops and decreases provide us the opportunity to make larger investments in our buildings, both in terms of capital improvements as well as targeted modernizations of learning environments. That's something we did talk about at the facility committee meeting last week, without increasing the tax rate on our, on our community members, but also finding an opportunity to bring some tax relief to the taxpayers along the way. So I think we've got a pretty amazing opportunity in the next couple of years to be responsive to our taxpayers and at the same time, take a bigger step in making some of these targeted facility improvements, and that's kind of what we need to be working on for the next year plus. I'm sure it'll be part of the strategic plan.
Any other questions or comments on the levy? Okay. Hearing none. I ask for a motion and a second to approve the resolution and certificates for the 2021 tax levy as presented, that the certificate of the tax levy be executed and all forms be filed with the DuPage County Clerk. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Was that Mrs. Booton? Yep.
Second.
Who was the second? Mr. Long? Okay. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Number three, approval of the 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 school calendars. Dr. Schuler?
I think Dr. Kyle's coming up to the podium to kind of moving off of his security detail and talking a little bit about calendars, so.
Excellent. Thanks, Board, for letting me come up and share. We had both the 2022, 23, and 23, 24 calendars posted since last board meeting. I did get 17 emails. Six of those 17 want to start later and end later, like Labor Day to Memorial Day. Three want one week before December 25th or Christmas for planning. Three liked the calendars, and there were five from Jefferson Early Childhood that had to do with a teacher institute day and a work day, something that I think the calendar committee could work with those teachers. So we had 17 emails that came back. I do feel it's our recommendation of the calendar committee that the board approve the calendars that were posted for the 22, 23, and 23, 24 school years.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Kyle? Dr. Yaboa?
I have a comment.
Yep.
I don't know if this is the right timing. Okay. My vote coming up not to approve this calendar is based on my conviction that seeks to uphold the dignity and humanity of all people as equal image bearers of God, a conviction violated by the celebration of Christopher Columbus and by the celebration's contribution to a national identity that fails to confront the past and blurs our moral vision. My interest is not in removing the calendar event as surveys suggest overwhelming public support of the non-attendance day. It is rather in renaming it on our internal documents as allowable by school code. Further, my interest is not in erasing the past. Rather, it is to invite dialogue that allows our contested history to be a more central to our conversations going forward. My hope is that we will garner the courage to ask difficult questions about who we are as we participate collectively in the education of our children. I ask that as we reflect on every aspect of public education, we do so with openness and honesty, reaching across lines of difference, to listen and learn from one another, modeling for our children a vision for community, belonging, and well-being in line with the vision, mission, and stated goals of the district.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Kyle?
I just, I would just like to make a quick comment that I just want to thank Dr. Yaboa for bringing this to the table. I think it's a really important conversation for us to have. I know as a 70, or I'm sorry, as a 47-year-old, I'm definitely of the generation of, in 1492, Columbus sailed the ocean blue, and I think as, we know we learn more along the way, and as we learn to look at things through new lenses, that we need to look at what those things, what those pieces of information are actually reflecting. And I appreciate the way that you're voting tonight, and I, I think this is a conversation that needs to be had. I also know how much work goes into making the calendars and the committees that are involved, and I think we're too far past at this point, but I would hope that we can maybe have a discussion in the summer, early fall, about how we can look at that day on our board, you know, on our school signs and that kind of thing, and that you continue to have this conversation and coordinate with Dr. Kyle and Dr. Schuler as we look at future calendars, and bring this topic up at the beginning of that process and bring it to the board where we can discuss it and give that committee this, again, if the board were to agree, I'm not making any assumptions about anybody else's things, but if that is what the board agrees, that we can give that information to that committee so that they can work that into the calendar. But, but I just wanted to say, I do appreciate you bringing this topic up, and, and it is a conversation that I do believe we need to have.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have one comment. First off, Mary of Dr. Yaboa, I appreciate you bringing this up last week, and I'm sorry you had to take the heat you did for members of our community. I don't think it was fair, and I think you made a, you made a good statement and brought something to our attention. I'm going to support the calendar as it's presented tonight, but from a personal reflection, I think this is really an unnecessary distraction for us. I'd rather focus on SEL and emotional wellness. We have much more important things. It's just a day off. Nobody celebrates Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day when they take the day off. We used to have Casimir Pulaski Day as a, as a holiday in March. We don't do that anymore. We used to have Veterans' Day as a day off. It's one of the most celebrated learning opportunities for kids during the course of the year. If it was me going into future years, I'd rather just be in school and have it as a learning opportunity for kids. That's my opinion.
Any other questions or comments?
I, just a couple of points just to clarify. The challenges I know are so hard with a unit school district in terms of trying to find a calendar that unites everyone, and I had an opportunity to talk with a group of teachers a couple of weeks ago, and when I walked away from that and kind of reflected on it, one of the things that I thought about was the need even to educate within our own staff in terms of, you know, why the calendar looks the way that it does, why we have full days on certain days, why we start on certain days, why we're off on certain days, and I feel we can even do, even more of a, you know, enlightening of our own staff in terms of just being able to, to understand that. I do appreciate about the Jefferson, you know, that you guys are looking at that. I know that they have a challenge. There's a lot of Mondays off, and that is their IEP day. You know, so I just think that, you know, if we can, if we can continue to talk even amongst ourselves in terms of why we do what we do, you know, I know it's, calendar's a tough, a tough one. I appreciate the effort to get our finals in before the holiday break and end that semester. It's something we've been wanting to do and talking about for, for multiple years, and I know the pandemic stopped us from doing it this year, and I'm excited that we're, we're able to do that, and hopefully that will, that will continue to work. So thank you for all the efforts and that, on that as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Having no other questions or comments, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 school calendars as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Next approval is the approval of the superintendent's contract. Before we ask for any information from Dr. Schuler, I just, I'd like to talk about, put process out there. The board has spent several months working on this contract and colluding, and part of that was looking at contracts of other benchmark districts. We delved into the last two contracts that Dr. Schuler has had with our district. Our goal in this contract was to our district as we move out of pandemic learning and the leadership to create vision to provide innovative opportunities for student learning. We will also be designing and updating a performance tool later this summer as we work through the Vision 2026 work through the Vision 2026 plan. Why don't we start with Board comments before we come to you? If that's okay? Are there any Board comments that would like to start? Share?
You want me to go first?
Sure.
Okay. So I recall what our district was going through when I first joined the Board in terms of our superintendents and the process we were going through. And I think Dr. Schuler's definitely changed the direction of our district, the trajectory of our district, and I admire that. You've led our district with vision and grace and courage over the last eight years, especially over the last roughly two years. Dr. Schuler is one of the most widely respected superintendents in the state of Illinois. I hear that all the time as I work with other school districts. And I fully support and am excited for you to continue leading our district for the next five years, even after I'm gone. So maybe it's premature, but I want to say congratulations and thank you.
Next, anyone? Go ahead, Mr. Long.
Same thing. I'm excited. I'm glad that this is where we're at. You know, I've learned a lot. You're our one employee, but you know, you, you know, from a personal perspective, you know, you taught me a lot and, you know, you provide a lot of leadership, so it makes it easy to work with you. Your care for the kids, your, your, your vision, your consistency, the way you're always grounded and anchored, and, you know, your advice when we're dealing with whatever sensitive topics, you know, and, you know, dealing with criticisms and everything else. I couldn't be more excited to have you here for another five years at the end of this contract. So thank you.
Next.
I just want to echo that. I, I am thrilled to have you for another five years. I'm ecstatic about that. I think, you know, you've done so much for our district, and I think your communication skills are something that I just completely envy in the way that you handle situations and all these different perspectives and all the anger and all the happiness and the sadness and all of it. And I'm just in awe of that. Every single time I see you send an email out, I, my God, if I could have a tenth of that, I would be really, really happy. So I'm just thrilled that you're here and the commitment that you have to this district. And, you know, and just after guiding this district through the most difficult time, I think, ever in public education, I think the fact that you want to stay here for another five years, having witnessed that and just, you know, and I know every district had its issues, but I, I'm just so thrilled. And I think the stability that is created for a district, for somebody to be here for another five years, and, you know, so it will be, I guess, 13, you know, at the end of that contract. I mean, that, that's amazing for a school district and the stability that provides. And I'm just really thrilled that we are so very fortunate to have you to do that for our district. So thank you.
We live in an outstanding school district. The number of comments we have and emails reflecting that, saying, "We moved here because of the schools," are endless. They, my, let's see, on six, this is my fifth year, I guess. It's been consistent. It has been strong, and the opinion has been united. Even when the criticism comes in, you see a reflection of, "We still appreciate the leadership." I think that's an important characteristic. What creates that are the teachers, staff, all the participants from the community, the students, and their cohesiveness and connectedness as a result of the leader of our district, and that's you. And so I look at this as a leadership decision. I look at it as a market-based decision. As Chris said, we looked at compensation models across our representative districts. I think we started this in June, if I remember right. Looking at those models, talking to attorneys about nuances of language, talking to Dr. Schuler about his objectives and goals as he develops and grows and leads our district. And I feel like we have a completely aligned model in place. And as, you know, going back to what Brad said, the path we've come through over the last four years is absolutely amazing. That's leadership. And I want the market to know that. I want our staff, students, and community to know that. And ultimately, we compete in a market, and this contract reflects the desires of this Board and the market we participate in. So thank you for your leadership.
Anybody else? Dr. Yaboa?
Just a quick one. As I, you know, I study organizational leadership, so I like to look at how leaders lead. And I will say confidently that I have seen integrity from you and your leadership. And by that, I mean what I saw as a parent, pre-board service, and what I see on the Board is the same. And I appreciate that a lot. I think that builds trust. Trust is necessary in turbulent times. We're in turbulent times. And I fully believe that this decision to promote a new contract is one that will maintain the stability of our district, and it's exactly what we need going forward. So I thank you for that.
Oh, Mrs. Blatner?
I'll just echo everything that was said and say thank you. I'm curious if Dr. Schuler is going to accept the contract?
Thank you. Couple things. I actually went back and watched the last contract, the meeting. It was December four years ago. And, you know, I, I look at these past 21 months, and we shouldn't let that define us, but I look at it and I see you're humble, you were humble, and took responsibility. And did we do everything right? Probably not, but I feel like the decisions that were made were done with the best information that we had at that time. And I, I feel like, and I said in the, in the last one, I appreciate how approachable you are, not just to us, but to the staff. That is, that is clear in buildings, that you're there all the time, you see kids learning. You know, part of why I sit in this seat is because of your leadership. And I'm going to go back to, I happened to be on the, as a parent, on the committee when you came and interviewed, as well as did a few other people as well with us. And I walked away thinking I was president of the PTA Council at the time, and thinking myself, I think I even wrote on the evaluation, that I want to work with this man. And I'm so excited that I had the opportunity. But there is something that always stuck in my mind from when you came that first time, and it's just reinforced tonight. You led with a picture of your family, and you shared that. And having your family sitting out there in the audience tonight just reinforces that that's still a core value that you have. And I'm excited to see that. So I'd like to make the motion to approve the performance-based superintendent's contract for July 1st, 2022, through July 30th, 2027, as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Second, Mr. Paulson? Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't give you an opportunity to speak. I am so sorry.
That's okay. He's got, no.
I think I'll let you vote first.
Okay. Take the vote first. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I appreciated listening to, to the comments. Certainly, I'm humbled by the feedback. I'm appreciative of the feedback. I do want to offer a couple of thank yous, obviously first to the Board for your trust in, in me and my ability to continue to lead the district. That means a lot. I want to thank my friends and colleagues along the back wall and all of their administrative colleagues that are not here tonight but are in their buildings that really put trust in me and allow me to serve them in the, in the district. I'm appreciative for it. I think when I came to the district eight years ago, if I remember it correctly, I think Lucas was maybe fifth grade, Ella was maybe third grade. So a little, I didn't actually know they were going to be here tonight. That was a bit of a surprise when I saw them come in tonight. But I, connection to tonight is that I do truly believe that I see every kid in District 200 as I see Lucas and Ella. If I lead that way, I'm not going to go wrong in, in the effort to lead the district. And so I'm going to continue to lead that way and, and give you everything that I have to support our, our students. We've got tremendous opportunity and work in front of us and certainly in partnership with my, my team and my colleagues. We're going to roll up the sleeves and get it done. So thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Onto written reports. We have attached to the monthly financial report, the FOIA report, the Board Communication Log, the Citizens Advisory Committee Report, reports from other Board members, the committee notes from the Board Finance Committee, Social Emotional Learning Committee, Facilities Committee. We're attached to the Board Agenda. Are there any other, is there any other additional information to be shared? Onto other reports from Board members. I'm going to ask that we just take a minute to each go around and highlight something from the triple I conference that you'd like to share. Mr. Long, I can start over there with you if you'd like.
You want me to start?
To share, is there something from triple I? Just one thing that you'd like to share?
Yeah, you know, I ended up with an extra equity course because the Every Voice Matters that I think you were in. Sorry, is that better? Thank you. But, so I did two or three on equity. I attended the, there was a Pastor Corey Brooks, there was an early Saturday morning session in her city, so getting that perspective. And then some of the rebuilding, the, the work that you guys did with, with your boss and with Dr. McBride. One on empowering students from Clinton, Illinois, where they are utilizing the Lady Gaga Born This Way Foundation. But one thing interwoven in all of it is just the linkage between equity, social emotional learning, and student connectedness. And I mean, one of the things that really stuck out to me was the relationship between co-curricular activities and achievement. And so that's something I think that we really need to maybe emphasize. I haven't really thought about that very much, just in terms of, of that relationship between co-curricular and achievement. And that was emphasized a couple times. So just the way the whole SEL is interwoven in every one, every session I was in really stuck out to me.
Dr. Yaboa?
Sure, yeah. I also enjoy the conference. I enjoy learning. I think, I consider myself a lifelong learner, perhaps because I'm a product of District 200 schools. One of my favorite conference sessions that I attended was on how special education is funded. So I learned a lot of the finer details of state funding, complicated nature of this work, and it gave me a depth of understanding of special education and its connection to resource allocation. I also enjoyed Anthony Jack's plenary. He talked about his research called "The Privileged Poor," which addressed in higher education contexts, lower-income students attending college, and some of the gaps and the experiences. And I think there's direct parallels to K-12, pre-K-12 education that are very helpful as we understand how to serve all our children. So overall, it was a really wonderful experience. I'm thankful for the opportunity.
Mr. Paulson?
So as, as I've stated before, I always have to kind of balance my time and attention with my, my work commitments during the conference as well as the school district. I did have the opportunity to be part of two presentations. I was a co-presenter twice on Saturday, one time focusing on, around the importance of communication as it relates to capital improvements. Did that with some other school districts. And then I had another opportunity to present with another school district who was kind of outlining their vision and their progress to kind of realign curriculum, student experience along with facility improvements at the same time. So while I was a presenter, I was actually learning from these other school districts as well. One of the sessions that I did attend was really around SEL, which is some things I've tried to focus on, not only tonight, but in prior attendance at conferences. And one of the things that I look back at my notes tonight, while we were looking at the portrait of a graduate, and it's really amazing, the similarities, they talked about the ability, the importance of academic achievement skills through an SEL lens. And I look at some of the criteria they have, that they wanted kids to be enquirers, knowledge learners, risk takers, and thinkers. And then within, within the category of thinkers, some of the notes I had, the importance of ethical decision-making and to take others' perspective into account. And then the importance of separating assumptions about stereotypes from fact. I thought that was really an interesting observation in light of, I guess, what we've been hearing tonight, as well as recent times. Couple other little tidbits that I, that I noted is just kind of the reinforcement and some of the data around mental health issues that have been escalating in kids and teenagers, even way pre-pandemic. And certainly, that's been reinforced, not reinforced, but to continue to rise the last couple of years. And one of the comments, one of the school districts talked about how the students were trying to create a mental health class as part of their curriculum. I know we've talked about embedding SEL skills a lot in the different classes. So one of the takeaways I had is, would it be kind of interesting to create a class around that? So I thought that was interesting. A lot of, a lot of reference to the Castle structure for the, for the, I'll try to best describe Castle. It's an organization kind of built around the, it's a collaborative for academic, social, emotional learning, and some of the characteristics and skills and tools in place for school districts. And I know we've talked about Castle quite a bit over the years at this district. So it's always good to kind of learn a little bit more and reinforce what I think I already know and bring that back home.
Mrs. Booton?
I will just give a quick recap of the delegate assembly. Everything passed the way that we, as a Board, had voted to vote on them, except for one, which was actually the one that we were, I think, most invited on, and that was the, the Board Member Child Care reimbursement. That one failed. But otherwise, excuse me, everything went through the way that we had. So the, the one that we opposed that they had recommended about school safety and arming staff, that, that one failed. But I will say that one, I think, has come up three times now, and that margin is shrinking. But, but it was good. They did it all through an app, which was really great, instead of all the hand counting, which was much more accurate. And although they had some technical issues in the beginning, but we got through it. And then beyond that, I will just say, Mary already touched on it, that I also attended the, the presentation by Anthony Jack about the privileged poor, and that was really very, very interesting and a lot of great information, so.
Mrs. Blatner?
It's hard to pick one minute to talk about the entire weekend. It was a lot of good learning. I attended the special education funding presentation with Mary and agreed that it was helpful, very eye-opening as to the complicated nature of special education funding and how limited some of those resources are. I think one of my favorite parts of the weekend was a couple of the presentations that I went to allowed for some more interactive collaboration and discussion amongst colleagues. I went to the roundtable discussions, and then there was another presentation that, this might have been my favorite part of the weekend, it was the presentation about race, what's race got to do with it? And the presenters were very dynamic. They asked us each to partner up with the person we happened to sit next to, and interestingly, ask us to share our personal education experience with that person. And I think it was interesting for both my partner and I to hear each other's story because I think both of us had anticipated something different. So I think the point of the exercise or part of, the exercise was part of making the point that, you know, for each teacher to really understand. It was a demonstration of why it's important to understand the whole child, the child's family, culture, and where they come from and what they're bringing to school and taking away from school. So that was probably my favorite, and I think partly because I sat next to a very wonderful, I think, older than myself gentleman who had a pretty neat story. So it was good. It was a great learning experience all around. Thank you.
I'll share. I'll share, Dr. Schuler and I sat on a panel discussion with the Director of Education from Candor Health and Dr. McBride, who's superintendent of Lockport High School. This is our second presentation that we've been honored to do at the conference. Our topic was from virtual distortion to rebuilding real-time connections. We shared a lot of facts about where students have been, what they're exposed to, how being online with, you know, kind of goes along with brain science and brain development. Spent a lot of time looking at the lens of how schools have been helping students navigate their virtual lives. You know, I think probably two things stand out to me, and when I was doing research for, for this, prior to the pandemic, one-third of a day is what an average teen spends online, and that's not for schoolwork, one-third of the day. And so when you really think about what that looks like over a period of a year, they're spending a lot of time. Their relationships online, you know, need to be, we need to be looking at those just, you know, to make sure that they're healthy just as they are in person. And, you know, another piece is, you know, media literacy. I think in the past, and I'm not saying us, I think just in general, in the past, there were one-off lessons where media literacy was taught, and we didn't look at it again. And media literacy needs to be ongoing and, and involved in, in multiple different facets. And so we need to keep looking, keep understanding where our students have been. I don't know, Dr. Schuler, is there anything else you want to chime in on?
Thank you. Did a great job.
On that. So appreciate that opportunity to do that work and, and share that at the, at the conference. Okay. Topics for future discussion is the five-year financial projections, the summer 2022 playground recommendations, and playground playbook. Are there any other topics that board members want considered for future discussion?
Chris, is there a point at which we are going to discuss dress code?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I don't know if it has to be next board meeting, but for the future to discuss the dress code issue that has been presented.
Oh, dress, dress code is, my, my understanding is we have.
We're looking at that as part of the handbook, so your dress code is in the handbook. So we are looking at that as part of the handbook. But we will bring an update certainly to the board.
That'll be like February, right?
Yeah, usually handbook comes aboard in February. Again, I would anticipate we'll bring you an update even in process, so.
And will there be committee oversee of that at all in any of our committees, like SCL or teaching and learning?
I wasn't planning to run that through a board committee unless the board is specifically requesting it.
Next regular board meeting is January twelfth, 2021, here at Hubble. Announcements, January twenty-six, twenty, or these should be 2022. Committee of the whole, seven PM at Hubble. There being no further action to come before the board, an open session, I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs., oh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our meeting is adjourned.